Welcome, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Asbury Park Planning Board. Today is Monday, February 22, 2021. And if you'll allow me to share my screen. Let's just one second. Okay. All right, there you go, Barbara. Take it away.
Okay, I'm calling this meeting to order today on Monday, February 22, 7:00 p.m. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting have been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions are published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of this notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the Guidelines of Virtual Meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Consumer Affairs, Community Affairs. Please note that all microphones of public users are muted until the public questions are commented or the comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom on a computer or dial *9 on your telephone. Your neighbor last four digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time during your question you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and will make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment session only, the public has three minutes to speak. Please turn off your cell phones or electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourselves before you speak at all times. And this meeting is being recorded with the end will be available to view via AP TV. Please join me with a salute of the flag.
Fidelias.
Fidelias to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. Okay. And I'm going to take role now. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Trudy Syfak is absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallopo. Rick Lambert is absent. And Barbara Kuzek.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, first item that's up for discussion is a council referral of the 2020 City of Asbury Park Land Development Regulations and Zoning Amendments. Michelle Alonso to present.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to swear in Michelle, CCH staff and inside staff because I'm sure they'll be going back and forth. So if I could get everyone to raise their right hands, members of the both staffs and Michelle Alonso.
Jack, I'm sorry, my camera won't work, but my hand.
I'll take your word for it. If you told me you're raising your right hand, I'll believe you.
Right hand up.
Okay. Do all of you solemnly swear that the testimony about the given this matters tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Starting with Michelle, could we get everyone's name spelled for the record and affiliation with the city and/or the board?
Michelle Alonso, A-L-O-N-S-O. And I'm the Director of Planning Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park, and I'm a licensed professional planner.
Thank you. Donna?
Donna Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. I am a licensed professional planner and the Board's planning consultant employed by Clark Caton Hints.
Thank you. Michael?
Michael Sullivan, S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N, Clark Caton Hints Board Planner. And I am a professional planner. Forgot the last part, sorry.
Jason Fichter, F-I-C-H-T-E-R, Inside Engineering, Licensed Engineer, Board Engineer.
Thank you. And Doug?
Doug Cleland, C-L-E-L-L-A-N-D, Inside Engineering, Board Engineer, and I'm a Licensed Engineer.
Thank you, everyone.
Irina, I need you to stop your screen share. Good evening, everyone. We're here to continue where we left off two weeks ago with amendments to the zoning ordinance. The Board had given the professionals and myself the task to make some amendments or some further amendments to the amendments that were presented two weeks ago. And Clark Caton Hints made those changes. They're on the city website and they were distributed to the Board. Tonight, I am quickly going to go through those changes, only those changes requested by the Board. And then the Chairwoman will open up to questions and public comment.
May I just make one statement, Michelle? I just wanted to let the public know, I know that in the prior meetings, there was a concern that some of the professional reports were not on the website. I raised that the day after that was brought up, brought to our attention. We have been, it's been stated by the city, and I know that our illustrious Board Secretary will ensure that all the documents are up to date indeed and on the website on time along with the reports of the planners. That was an error, and we apologize. The goal is certainly to not have that happen again. So thank you whoever brought that up, and we will keep at it. All right, Michelle, it's all yours.
Okay, so I remind everyone, one of the first changes that was asked for is in zone districts, and this is page three of what's currently on the website and was sent to all Board members. If you look at my screen or at your set in small print in the chart, you can see the words floors 1 to 3 equal 5 feet, floor 4 equals 15 feet, or 5 equals 25 feet. This is a response to the comment for the B district that buildings step back from the R1 district. So that's why the words are added, adjacent to a residential district or use. So if floor 1, it can have the 5 feet of setback, but floors, floor, when you hit floor 4, it's 15 feet, floor 5, 25 feet. So it wedding cakes back from that residential property line.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Hi, this is Eric Gallopo. So the maximum height in the B district is currently five stories?
Yes.
And you know, I think that I brought up this concern particularly with some of the potential large sites along Memorial Drive. And while I do think that this is an improvement, I'm curious if maybe I would open this up to the rest of the Board. I think my concern was actually that the mass should be pushed towards Memorial Drive. So would there be openness to allowing perhaps six stories within 100 feet of Memorial Drive and stepping down to four stories after 100 feet from Memorial Drive, where you're adjacent to a residential use or zone? While I, and I don't want to push, you know, hold this up or throw a wrench. And I see what this is attempting to achieve, but I feel like Memorial Drive is by de facto is so wide that it's one of the only streets that could accept the additional density with relatively little impact to its surroundings.
Say that again. You would do six?
I'm curious how everybody else might feel about doing a six-story building if you're within 100 feet of Memorial Drive, so the first 100 feet into the block. I don't have a.
Did we already have this discussion last time, or is this a new discussion?
This is a new discussion, yeah.
Well, so wait, let me, I want to make it clear to everyone, this would only be for property fronting Memorial.
Right.
And then for lots, well, the one thing, lots that go 100, more than 100 feet deep.
That's right.
Because if you're fronting Memorial and you only have 100 feet, would we keep it at five? Or we'd let everyone fronting Memorial have six?
Michelle, I think it's a benefit to have more density on Memorial Drive, more height and density on Memorial Drive, and to have the building step down as it comes. So giving them six feet along, six stories along Memorial Drive. And I didn't mean to say to be determinative about 100 feet, but some dimension in from Memorial Drive as well. And it's just a question, you know, if this is something the Board feels is acceptable. But I'm not sure it really redistributes the mass in a way that takes advantage of Memorial Drive.
Yeah, this is Michael Sullivan, Eric, just to think about this in real terms as it would relate to a building prototype. If you were doing, if you were extending up above Memorial Drive frontage, if you were extending up to six stories with residential building construction, your depth would be probably maximum, assuming some sort of a, you know, right? You might be at 65 to 70 feet deep max, right?
Agreed, correct. That's the depth of the building, right?
That's right. That's right. So in reality, I mean, you could make exceptions where you had larger lot depth, and I don't know, I don't have the specifics of lot depths in my mind right now. But it might be thinking about it in terms of maybe that is the distance if you're thinking about creating some additional density and height there, and then stepping down after that, that block, if you were thinking about massing that way. Just an idea.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. My, I guess what I was thinking is, I was thinking of lots that extend further into the block, as many of them on Memorial Drive do. And so as you wrap the corner, you might want to maintain that six-story for the first 30 feet, I don't know, and then step down and step down. But in doing so, you're not taking any development rights away from the owner. You're just telling them that the mass needs to be more oriented towards Memorial Drive.
Yeah, I think the issue when you talk about, you know, taking something away is that this zone has already been built, right, at five stories, correct? It's been adopted. So we can't really say here whether or not, I mean, I can't say sitting here whether or not there actually would be a diminishment in development density or development rights with respect to that.
No, and that's not my point. I think we should, like, we want to keep them at the same amount of development, but redistribute the mass towards Memorial Drive. That's all. I'm not, I'm not trying to squash it down.
No, no.
I would probably advocate for bigger affordable housing bonuses. You know, I'm not, I'm not afraid of density. But my concern is that, as you can see in the areas marked as B zones along Memorial Drive, many of those sites do extend very far down onto the numbered streets. And, you know, a five-story building right next to a, you know, or a four-story building right next to a two-story residential house when we have the opportunity. And the only reason I'm suggesting this is because Memorial Drive is so wide that the additional height on Memorial Drive wouldn't be noticed in the same way. But I also want to, I'll stop talking, and maybe someone else on the Board would like to opine.
Jim Henry, I'd like to chime in and say that the chart that is in front of me indicates that there's four stories, not five, on Memorial, in the business though.
You get the fifth story if you do affordable housing.
Okay.
That's how it's currently written.
Right, and I guess I would even advocate that without a bonus for housing, like, you're imagining a kind of consistent four-story across the entire development site. And I just think that there's a way to, even if you don't do the affordable, maybe it's five stories on Memorial and three stories on the numbered streets, you know, just to bring it down as it comes around the corners.
I think it would, I think it would have to be six because right now, the fifth story is your bonus for affordable housing. And I do think it would be considered taking it away unless we did what you said where it's a six and a third, it's made up somewhere else.
But I'm saying for an as-of-right development that does not go for the affordable housing bonus, you could do a similar redistribution of the mass so that there's lower heights on the numbered streets and higher height on Memorial. That's all I'm saying, is whether it's a no bonus or a bonus, there's more density on Memorial and less density on the numbered streets, less, pardon me, less height on the numbered streets and more density on Memorial.
I think conceptually, from an urban design standpoint, that makes total sense in terms of just the concept. I think it makes total sense.
It's more, I agree, the concept makes sense, but I like the maximum five stories on Memorial.
So John, if I might interject, a good measurement of an adequate height ratio. So typically, if a street is 60 feet wide, let's just say, a street, any street is 60 feet wide, a building that is one and a half times that, which would be 90 feet, is what would be considered, you know, about the limit of height where it would start to feel too canyon-y. Memorial is 150 feet wide. When you take into account that there is the entire right-of-way of Memorial Drive as well as the entire right-of-way of the train tracks. And so I think Memorial Drive is one of those locations in our city where that additional height would actually be not noticed to the same extent as if it were on such a, on a narrower street. And I'm not advocating for that at all. So, you know, I hear what you're saying. That's what I would say is why I think a six-story building might not feel so tall on Memorial where it would on some other streets, though we do have exceptionally wide streets in Asbury.
And I would have to say Main Street's probably wider than Memorial, and the limit's not there. Again, it doesn't have the railroad right of way, but just because of railroad track there, I don't, I understand what you're saying, but again, to me, it's like opening a can of worms or something like so. I don't know, maybe more information needed because, you know, you're talking about, well, then wraparound's only three. I mean, it's got to be something definitive. It's got to be like, it can't be, we're not going to go project by project.
No, agreed. I do, I do agree with you. It should be definitive. And, you know, I think that's where if we were to explore it, I think it probably needs like a study, but, well, I don't want to belabor it, and I don't want to push the Board in one direction or another. But I would say that I do think there's an opportunity to look at, especially since there's this, only this one district on Memorial Drive. This isn't Main Street. This is Memorial Drive, essentially a one-sided street because of the train tracks. So I think there's an opportunity for us to not take anything away from anybody, to give them the opportunity to develop all of the, everything they're entitled to, and transition between the single-family, the R1 neighborhood and the business district in a way that, you know, keeps it on level. That's all.
I believe that there are a number of things that are going to come out of all of these discussions and have, that we will require additional review, some studies that might have to be done once this was presented to the Board. So this can be one of those things that gets put down as, you know what? More things have to be, we have to take a look at it a little further. We go forward with what we have, and if we, if we as a Board want to move forward as a project, we can.
I would recommend, yeah, I would recommend the study.
This is Alexis, and I would second Barbara's thought that this does deserve a study. I mean, just for the benefit of the Board, when Michael was saying this makes sense and we would allow it at either a 60-foot or 75-foot depth, that's because that allows for a double-loaded corridor. So the number of units that you would get as a bonus is pretty, it probably is more than comparable from what you would get from a greater depth in the lot. The other thing that I will say and why I think it deserves a study is because it allows for those corner units, especially if you give 75 feet, to be two-bedroom units or even three-bedroom units. And what we're missing in many of the kind of developments that are coming online is that they're all one-bedroom. And that again, doesn't lead to a diversity of family types that I think we all support. So I would like to propose that that also be kind of considered in the reflection of form, that then can we do something other than just having all studios and one bedrooms because we've allowed greater height on the corners?
I didn't think we could, unless it's a redevelopment area, dictate.
Yeah, no, you definitely can't dictate. You can incentivize. There's no way you can dictate the bedroom version, but if you're giving.
If it's affordable housing, then you can.
Yeah.
Because you have to have a certain percentage of three and two-bedroom apart.
Right, right. Yeah, in terms of, and I think you're, I think if you're interested in a more, a better mix of bedrooms, that's an incentive you can build in. It's not something you can mandate, but you can build it into incentives.
Okay, I'm ready to move on. I don't want to.
I'd like, we're gonna, I'd like to keep this language that's proposed because, so the amendment we're talking about really affects only four blocks of frontage. And one of the things that, anyway, we'll just move on.
I'm fine with it as proposed, I guess I would say, but could we do a greater? I really don't think it's that heavy of a lift, since it's only four blocks, to just study a typology that then maybe we would incentivize or encourage.
I. I think that, I think that that's something that we should consider because it is, right, it's not, I don't think that it's a really heavy lift, but it is something that we really have to consider, and it'll take more than a few minutes to figure out.
And we may decide based on a very preliminary, very, very limited study, that it's not worth it.
Right, or we might decide that it is, and let's move forward. So I think we should just take it as a takeaway, as we have other things from all of this that there will have to be further investigations. But all of this should not stop because of that.
I agree.
Okay. Page 12. This was the request that in lieu of a five-foot planted, or we had written it in lieu of a planted buffer, you could put a fence. We've changed it that you can have the fence if you do a three-foot planted buffer. That's number 15 on page 12. We also changed in Building Design 6, when the materials that can be used is wood. Uh, did I skip?
No, page 15.
Okay, and the repeat of the buffer on G Site Design, page 15. And at the request of the Board, number four, building material and architectural details on all sides of each building need not be identical, but shall be unified in overall appearance through finished materials, details, and architectural design. And this is replacing the language that basically all sides of the building had to be of the same material. And then again, the change to number seven, wood is a material that can be considered to clad a building. Page 16, conditional uses, we struck motor vehicle engine or body repair garage. Page 18, arcades, we struck the words for more coin-operated amusements. And the words three or fewer coin-operated amusements may be permitted as an accessory use. So that's struck. All the references to coin operation is struck. Then we have highlighted in purple C because this probably was an omission on our part. We believe that we should strike all of C because this is a regulation that the zoning officer cannot really enforce, that the, that only, that minors have adequate adult supervision. That's something the zoning officer would not be able to determine. So if the Board is in agreement, we'd like to strike C. Okay?
Agreed.
Okay. This is the striking of the language and conditional uses related to motor vehicle service station and vehicle repair garage, pages 30 and 31, as discussed. I want to note, we did leave the definitions in for these and the parking standards because if someone does come to the zoning board for use variance, it gives that Board guidance. Then definitions, page two, we added the word cluster development in the definition of application for development. And then because we struck language in the section that regulates arcades, we added language in the definition, that arcade shall mean establishment that is more than 20% of its publicly accessible floor area occupied by coin-operated amusements and similar devices. Thus, again, not everything is coin-operated, so similar devices takes care of that. Stoop, we put in a definition for stoop, shall mean a narrow staircase ending with an uncovered platform at a building entrance. Then parking on page three, we changed compact parking from 35 to 25% of all parking spaces in a garage or parking lot.
Michelle, can I, can I just jump, this is Michael Sullivan, can I just jump in on that? After the discussion at the last meeting, you may recall that there was a discussion about whether that was too much or too little. We did a little bit of research between the last meeting and now, and it seems like it's close. It's, if you said 30%, you're probably in the middle average area of this. So we lowered it. We understand there's a concern about larger cars. So we went to 25% on this, and we think that that's a pretty good compromise between what the average you see is and what the Board seemed to be gravitating towards. So that's how we got there.
Thank you. Community design standards. This again was a request of refining the language so we didn't get cookie cutter designs or that, but this addition gives us some flexibility. So the design of additions. That in addition to existing home within a designated district shall be limited to the side or rear yard and should use common or visually related materials to those comprising the existing principal building. And then we put in some new language for flexibility for roofs. The pitch of new roof shall vary from the pitch of existing roofs. The same standards for ornamentation for new construction shall be applied to additions to. to additions to existing buildings. The architecture of any new addition shall be compatible with the architectural and overall composition of building elements exhibited in the existing principal structure. So this doesn't permit copycatting, caddying, but it does ensure that the design is harmonious with the original building. And then the last set of changes requested were to the map. We corrected up in the northern center, the, um, the bleeding of the P2 district into the street. So it's as should, it's the correct zones on either side of the street. And we also, at the request of the public, changed the color of the scatter site redevelopment plan to something that was not red, so it's purple now. So those are our changes requested at the last meeting. Does the board have any questions regarding these changes?
No questions from the boards? Unmute yourself if you do.
This is Alexis, I, this is just a map question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so in the northeast quadrant, that orange B business seems to include what might appear like an alleyway. And then I guess the other part is on Memorial, but that's not actually development, right? Are those privately owned? Street access?
I mean, it's, if it's, if it's an alley, it's a public alley.
So I guess what is the, the finger coming out to the left of the orange development?
That's because, so that, the Main Street redevelopment plan, originally didn't take into consideration all the, all the B lots. So, um, that's a leftover, meaning it didn't get into Main Street. It's not in the R1, so that's why it's left as a B.
But that realistically would not be developable.
We have regulations for orphan B lots that may be residential. And truthfully, I'm not sure what occupies that lot now.
So, so Michelle, just, just so that we make sure that we're talking about the same thing, where, where are you pointing to?
So if I, I don't know if you guys.
I don't think that's what Alexis is.
No, so if you look at the letters M S R A.
Yes.
You basically go, you know.
Left.
Just directly left.
No, no, up.
Yeah, and then you'll see a little, there's a little, it must be an alleyway spine that's colored.
No, that's a, that's an L-shaped lot right behind, that's right behind the strip mall on, on Sunday.
Right, behind the strip mall, but I mean, realistically, that's not redevelopable.
No, well, that's private, right, this is private. There's actually, I believe, a structure back there in industrial.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, I was just curious, all right, thank you.
And what, with the changes we made tonight.
Thank you.
I was gonna say though, to the B, who did that, that's great, to the B district. Uh, it's not going to be developable.
Right, it doesn't have the, right, right.
Because we now need some such severe setbacks, so.
I mean, I would just feel really sorry for those lots, those, you know, four or five deep lots that were developable, so.
Right, and so, yeah, this kind of takes care of it.
Thank you, that was really more of a curiosity clarification, thank you.
Anybody else, any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, just Jim Henry, I just have a quick one, on the Deal Lake overlay zone. It appears, from what I look at the map, that there is an orange below the, uh, below that zone, yeah, it, it's just a color that's bothering me, I'm, maybe I'm going blind or something. But I'm, I'm not sure, uh, does that show the existing zoning below, or is that? It, it appears that that's a Deal Lake zone, but Deal Lake zone is blue and white, this appears to be orange and green.
This is the, so I, I think Mark tried to make sure it was crystal clear. So the underlying zone is the R3, which is the orange color. Then the Deal Lake Drive Inclusionary Zone for Affordable Housing, it's shown as a combination of two colors, the fluorescent green and the black hatching. And there's, to show that it's an overlay.
Okay, but that doesn't show up on the, on the key, Michelle, that's.
No, it does, Deal Lake, the second item on the key, Deal Lake Drive Inclusionary.
Yep. Yeah, I got it.
Right.
Okay. It just doesn't seem to me that the key and the, the, the map match. And just another thing, if you could, when you print the final edition of this, could you blow that map up and make it a lot bigger to cover, it could, looks like you make it twice as big on that page.
You want me to blow this up now on the page?
No, not, not now, in the final, in the final form, where you print the, the final ordinance. If that map could be blown up to take up most of the page, it would be helpful to everybody.
Sure. But what inconsistency do you see in the legend?
Well, as I look at the legend, the second one down, it does not appear to match what is on the, uh, the zoning map. I'm, it appears from what, from what I see on the legend, it's a light green background with, uh, it looks like black or blue, I'm not sure which.
Um.
And that, on the, on the, on the map itself, it looks like it's orange and.
Yeah, Jim, it's an, it's an overlay district, so it, it's showing the underlying zoning, which is R3, which is the dark orange.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions from, from any board members?
Yeah, John Moore, uh, on the map. So go to the Main Street by the railroad tracks in between Main Street, coming down Deal Lake Drive, you got the Main Street Redevelopment Zone, I believe in Park, I mean, the park isn't green. It's purple.
What did?
Across from, across from 711 on Seventh Avenue.
Okay, you're saying that should not be in Main Street?
Well, it's a public park, so are we going to tell it to somebody?
No, we said the same thing last time about Sunset Park, the part of that is in, is in the Main Street redevelopment area, it's part of the plan, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, Michelle, not to.
My bad.
That was unclear, so we clarified it, thank you.
So some, so some parks count and some don't, my bad, thank you.
Yeah, it's just a portion of it, John, just a small portion. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, um, let's open up the, if any, anybody in the public has any questions about what was discussed today only, uh, please raise your hand, and, um, I will call on you.
Um, I show one, I showed two people with their hands raised, Bill, Mr. Bill Macklin, please go ahead and speak.
You're, you're, you're muted, Mr. Macklin? Unmute yourself? Okay, um, maybe we should move on, Irina, and then come back?
Okay, um. Did we hear something? Okay, Mr. Macklin, if, so if you can, please refer to the meeting invitation and instructions, and if you can't use the link, if you can call on your telephone or cell phone, so that we can hear you, please. Uh, and I'll call on the next speaker, phone number ending in 350, go ahead and speak.
I, Ernest Magnoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive Apartment 5 D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, 07712. So we're talking about the rewriting of the, uh, uh, master plan and code, et cetera. And I believe, uh, tonight you're focusing on the, the overlays, is that correct?
No, sir, we're focusing on the comments and changes requested at the last meeting.
Okay, all right, can you, can you just, can you just highlight a few, and then I could just, you know, like, could you just highlight one, and I could just ask a question?
We act, actually, Mr. Magnoli, we already reviewed all of them for the past at least half hour. Um, if there's.
Well, you know what it is, you know what it is, I do this as a concerned citizen. I don't get paid or anything, and you know, I go to a lot of town meetings, and I don't always have time to listen to these boring Asbury meetings. So sometimes I just try and get in when I can, when there's comment or question time. And every other municipality never refuses, they say, okay, Mr. Magnoli, here's what the highlight was. Uh, we talked about the overlay, the color of the overlay was asked to be changed for the parks. I said, okay, uh, and I'll ask a question, but not in Asbury, you guys just want to shut everybody down and get it to the point where nobody calls in. Because if it wasn't for me and Baumgartner, and maybe one or two other people, who else would go through this ridicule? Right, with your lawyers there, muting us, it's ridicule. You know what I mean, out-of-town planners? Like they own our city.
Irina, please.
Okay, Mr. Magnoli, I've gone ahead and greeted you, if you have a question.
You've been warned, asked your, your chairwoman.
We're gonna give you a chance to ask a question.
Sorry, wait, you're being warned, Chairwoman has already instructed you to ask your questions of the testimony of the witness.
Okay, so was it, uh, Mr. Alonso that testified?
Yes.
Okay, good. Did you, did you testify about the, the rezoning of the extra?
Oh, no, tonight I did not.
Okay, did you testify about the request of the public for the, the coloration to denote the overlays of parks in zones, so at least it could be one or two sets, so that at some point people could see, even though they're superimposed into the, the, the larger coloration, there are things that exist underneath that, which it's hard to tell, and I think it, it was asked that you generate a few, some that would have the old, the old coloration, and then you could figure it out side by side with what now is the overlay. Uh, wa, wasn't that a change that was asked for, or was that denied last week? Or did you testify to that tonight, or you didn't?
I testified to the changes made to the map tonight.
Okay, the color, the coloring?
The coloring.
Okay, and did you testify that somehow the public will be able to visually see either on duplicate, different colored charts, or are you gonna go with just one, and everybody's gonna have to figure out for themselves, I mean, which way?
The, the map on the screen and what's on the website is the map that I testified to tonight. And I made the changes agreed upon at the last meeting. And producing, doing a dual map is not what was agreed upon, because legally, it's too confusing. The zoning on the screen.
Well, just because lawyers can't figure it out, doesn't mean that we can't. I know legally lawyers have a trouble figuring out anything, but we're, we're, some of us are more astute than lawyers, so.
Irene, unmute him, please.
All right, so let me.
Would you please mute him? Mr. Magnoli, you've been warned, okay? I'm gonna give you one more warning, also, ask her questions based on the testimony that you observed or listened to. Okay, if you didn't hear the, you didn't hear her testimony, you're gonna have a very difficult time questioning a witness on cross-examination when you didn't hear their testimony. So, go right ahead.
Go ahead and speak, Mr. Magnoli, please ask a question.
You have to be unmuted?
He's unmuted.
Am I gonna be able to comment later?
Yes.
Yes.
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold my comments then, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Magnoli. Mr. Macklin, I will ask again, I see that your hand is raised, let me lower your hand and see if you can speak again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, I'm passing, I'm sorry, go, screw around with this, but I was having trouble with my laptop. I apologize.
No problem, thank you.
Go on with your meeting, please.
Okay, so you don't have a question?
Not right now, thank you, nor in.
Thank you, okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Please continue.
Okay, so at this point, if we have no other, if we have no other questions, do, does the board have any comments that they would like to provide for, for the, this remainder? Or everything that was presented tonight, which would essentially conclude the zoning amendments?
Madam Chairwoman, perhaps we should hear the public comments first, and then the board members may have additional comments based on.
Uh, can I get a motion to open a public comment, please?
Jim Henry, make that motion.
Okay, let's open up public comment, please raise your hands, you have three minutes to, to speak. Are we, we need to unmute you?
I'm sorry, Barbara, I have a motion by Jim Henry, can I get a second?
Second by Alexis Taylor.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will open the session to public comment. And I have two hands raised. Mr. Macklin, I'm going to unmute you, did you mean to have your hand raised, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay, just one second, Mr. Macklin. I'm going to swear you in, and then I'm going to put, um, and put a timer on for three minutes. Uh, Jack, would you like to swear, Mr. Macklin?
Mr. Macklin, although I can't see you, I'm going to accept your word, I would like you to raise your right hand, please. And do you solemnly swear that any testimony that you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do, uh, but my question is.
No, Mary, please state your name for the record, spell.
William, William Macklin, Asbury Tower.
Hold on, let me finish, let me finish. I need you to spell your name, and then give us your address, please.
William Macklin, M A C K O L I N, address is, uh, 1071 Asbury, Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park.
Thank you.
All right, but I have a question, Mr. Serpico. Is, may I ask a question or make a comment on a subject that was not raised thus far in the meeting?
Not really, you're outside the scope of the hearing.
Okay, then I, I withdraw, I'm sorry, I thought I could, that's why I was raising my, I passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, just one second.
Take your time.
Okay, Mr. Magnoli, you're up, Mr. Serpico is going to swear you in, and then I will start the clock, Mr. Serpico.
Well, is that after I'm sworn in, you start the clock?
Yes, after you're sworn in, and I'll let you know when.
I don't want to, I don't want to lose any precious moments.
Right.
Mr. Magnoli, please raise your right hand.
I am.
Thank you, do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address.
Ernest Magnoli, M I G. Ernest Magnoli, M I G N O L I, four hundred D L A Drive Apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Been a homeowner there since August of two thousand and seven.
Floor is yours.
I'm starting the clock now, Mr. Magnoli. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have three minutes, right?
Yes, and I will give you a one-minute warning.
Fantastic. So I'd like to start out by saying, uh, from what I heard tonight, uh, uh, the, the planning board revisions, that it's my belief ongoing repeatedly and continuously that the whole process is out of control. Uh, it's my opinion and comment that I know, have witnessed and seen violations of sunshine law, conflicts of interest, nepotism, collusion. Uh, people who shouldn't be, uh, working on revisions or working on, on planning, uh, who directly benefit by certain changes, should not have access to many backroom deals in the council or through Zoom or whatever these days. You know, public being excluded, public being, I'm gonna use the word be kind and say harassed. Well, I get more than harassed, though. I, I get threatened and assaulted. But still, for a lot of people, they get harassed to the point where they don't even bother calling in anymore. So many people are so disenfranchised and heartbroken as to these kind of planning meetings that you have and these revisions of the plan, where we're alienated. We, we're, we're, you know, up against lawyer after lawyer. Most of them have no real interest in Asbury. They don't live here. And they really are getting paid by our tax dollars to, as I said, what I feel harass us for things that we don't agree with when you make changes or even the process. And I don't even agree with who's on the board. I think half the people on the board are conflicted. I mean, you got the chairman of the planning board. She's got to be on a hundred committees now. You got a mayor there. I mean, how much more conflict do you need? I mean, you, you shouldn't be hard up for people, but why do you keep picking from the same trough? You know? Jennifer Souter, Mayor Moore, Barbara, uh, uh, Curse, whatever, you know, and, and friends. You know, and Amy's friends. And then Amy pops up. And then their friendly lawyer pops up. One minute?
No, thirty-two seconds.
Oh, and then, and then their friendly lawyers pop up, you know? Former employees of Asbury who have contracts and businesses here. They're also lawyers who's supposed to be representing us, the planning board, but they're against us. And then they keep getting renewed. I don't know how, I don't know how it keeps happening. Only in Asbury can this go on. And you don't feel ashamed that only someone like me would call up and comment? Look what you've done to fifteen thousand people. Humiliated?
We'll be on it.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Magnoli, your time is up. I've muted you. I do not see any other hands raised, so we can continue.
Can I get a motion to close public comment, please?
Move to close.
Irish will move.
Okay, I'll take a motion by Yvonne Clayton and a second by Jim Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, any, is there any comment, uh, by any board member that they would like to do based on what we've heard today?
Um, there is a comment I'd like to make. Jack, is it not a requirement of the municipal land use law of New Jersey that the mayor be included on the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, so every municipality in New Jersey must include the mayor?
There's a, on every planning board for the class one member who's the mayor. Class two is a council representative. Class three is a municipal employee that does not have to be a resident. And the rest of the members are class four citizens of the city of Asbury Park.
I just, I, I wanted to be clear for my own understanding. Thank you.
I can tell you, we do, we absolutely do nothing outside the law.
Yeah.
It's that simple. Make a mistake here and there. Everybody's human. We all make mistakes, myself included. But do we intentionally violate laws as claimed? No.
No other comments? Okay, can I get a motion to, uh, pass the zoning amendments as have been discussed over the last number of meetings, uh, that were for, uh, the last bit of it, we finished up tonight? Uh, can I get a motion to pass those?
As Refer it onto council, right, for the recommendation. You're gonna actually refer it onto council with the recommendations of the board, finding your consistency with the master plan and making such other comments as you deem relevant and just.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to pass?
So moved. Mike Manzal.
I'll second it.
Hey, I have a motion by Mike Manzella and a second by Barbara Krizak. I will take role now. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Galpo.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
That is a unanimous yes.
Right, I'd like to, I'd just like to take just a second to thank, um, to thank our board, Michelle, Michael, and Donna. I know that we've been working on this for a year and a half, if not longer. And I want to thank you for bringing this to us and for the board for giving all their input um, over the numerous nights that we've done this. And, and you've given us the, your input, you've given us your, the attention that I think that this deserved. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, folks.
Okay, the next one up, uh, another council referral uh, from two thousand twenty-one, the city of Asbury Park Stormwater Control Ordinance.
Oh, Irene, I need to screen share. Is it not allowing you?
Yeah, you're sharing right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, Count, uh, Councilman. Good job, Michelle. Board members.
Okay, let's get
One council member, one mayor.
Warn for this application or for this matter, please.
Mm-hmm.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You state your name for the record and your affiliation with the city of Asbury Park.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment and Licensed Professional Planner in the State of New Jersey.
Thank you.
So good evening again, everyone. So tonight I'm going to present on the council referral to changes to our stormwater sewer section of chapter thirty. This is this, the, um, the part of the ordinance that governs how stormwater sewer is designed. This is, it's coming about to you tonight because a year ago NJDEP requested that municipalities update to at least what they call their model ordinance. Uh, a board can impose more restrictive stormwater sewer regulations, but a minimum we are required by the beginning of March to at least adopt what they term the model ordinance.
So, pardon the interruption. You said board. I assume you meant council. Governing body.
Yes, thank you, Jack.
Okay, no problem. Sorry for the interruption.
No, I'm sorry. Um, trying to juggle paper and digital. So the model ordinance by the DEP is, is both more stringent than what we currently have adopted. In fact, what we have adopted in our chapter thirty is the last model ordinance by the DEP. Um, what the most, when the most important things with this model ordinance is it allows options. Uh, it's more stringent controlling stormwater runoff, but now you can do green infrastructure to control runoff. And it can be done either through detention basin, basins, or what's called, um, infiltration. And the ordinance that's presented tonight gives different options. Um, and different options that would be left to the discretion of either the city engineer or the board engineer. So it's not a one-size-fits-all. If underground detention is required, which it is for many major developments here in the city, then one of the big changes is that it has to be smaller detention basins, not one large one. It could be a detention basin with other methods to control runoff. And that the, the, um, the detention basins now have other quality controls. They're going, oops, they're required by the DEP. Click, click. Something happened with my screen. Okay. So some of the things that will be required is a maintenance agreement, uh, for underground detention deed notices, um, testing for if we do underground detention. And if there is going to be infiltration instead of underground detention, then there's going to be ground, border, m- mounding analysis required, and that's mostly to avoid adverse impacts such as surface ponding and flooding of basements or the properties adjacent to the new development. Another major change from the DEP is that now driveways count. Any place that a car is parked or traverses, even if it's done with pervious pavers, it will be counted towards the stormwater requirement. So we, the municipality took the model ordinance and we made some changes to it um, to make it a little stricter. One of the biggest changes we did, and it's on your screen in blue, um, is that we're making stormwater regulations required, not for just our major development projects, but for minor development projects here in the city. We added on, in the model ordinance, a definition, low-impact development techniques. And this was to make it clearer of what we call green infrastructure. And, um, it includes parts such as grading, landscaping, rain gardens, and different more natural ways to, to, um, control runoff. We put in the definition for minor development. So now it will be that any development that results in an increase of impervious surface of one thousand square feet or more or disturbance of five thousand square feet more of land, but does not meet the definition of a major development. We put in these requirements for minor development. And again, we give discretion to either for, if something goes to the board, then the board engineer has discretion. Um, what are the best mix of methods to control stormwater? If it's something that is only reviewed by the zoning officer, then the city engineer would aid the zoning officer in what is the best methods to control runoff. And the table five, the minor development BMP, gives examples of the different methods that can control runoff. And then seven is a new penalty section where if it's, um, that you, if you don't comply, you receive anywhere of a penalty of a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars, depending if you're unresponsive to the, um, to the violation from the zoning officer. So that is my presentation. I understand that the, uh, the board engineer had come, has compiled a memo asking for, um, additional amendments. So, Madam Chairwoman, I believe that the, uh, board engineer would like to read his report into the record.
Do we have it already available to make it an exhibit?
Oh, we do. We do. I, maybe I misspoke. Well, first, does anyone have any, um, questions? But I understand that the, um, we may want to, the board engineer may want to go over certain points in
Sure, but I want to identify for the record, uh, the document and evidence.
Yes.
Once we're done with questions of you.
All right, um, does, do the board members, or should we, Jack, um, because I'm a little, that, this is a little different here.
Right.
I just wanted to find out that should we go to the report, which means that there are additional things that we would like to add? Or, because what, what Michelle just went over is what was given to us by the council. These are not changes the, the planning board is requesting, but it, there are changes that the council made to the state request.
Okay, so, okay, let's, let's go to the basics. We're, we're doing this under our review powers. Uh, these ordinances are considered development ordinances and the like. And anytime the council wants to change them, eh, add new ones, detract, what have you, uh, the proposed legislation has to first be reviewed by the planning board. Planning board reviews it, makes recommendations based on what they've seen and based on what we hear from our staff and members of the public and the like. Um, and refer it back, uh, to the council with the report. So, um, you know, you've heard Michelle. Um, I would, I would think if you don't have any questions of her, we'd want to hear from Jason, uh, from a technical perspective. Um, I have a couple of questions regarding things that may be planning in nature, like they call, talk about variances and, and exceptions. I want to clarify which they, what they are, because the burden of proof is different for each. And also some jurisdictional questions, uh, that I had questioned, a discussion with Michelle a little earlier today regarding, uh, whether things should go to planning or whether things should go to the zoning board. So, uh, I think
Jack, can I make just a really, really quick clarification?
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I just wanted to point out, so these, this is new stormwater, um, regulations adopted by DEP a year ago. It actually is required by the municipality, they give them a year, but in March of two thousand twenty-one, the municipality is required to adopt the bare minimum.
Right.
I think what the council has done in this case, um, and it goes from having listened to how important this was to considering many of our applications, um, and that it continued to be a concern of the planning board, is they went, um, above and beyond. So they actually increased the standard, the minimum standard. And, um, that was the intention, you know, this isn't, you know, they try to make one model ordinance that fits every single municipality. In consideration of that, the council actually spent some time saying, what makes sense for Asbury Park? Um, and so I would just say, you know, a lot of municipalities are adopting this, just the required language. I think that it is, um, and, and we'll get into the details. I can't wait to hear from the engineer, but it's commendable that Asbury Park and the council took a step to say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna hold to a higher standard. And that's what they've done, essentially.
Yeah, oh yeah, my reading of it sounded that way to me, too.
Yeah.
And I, this is Jen Souter. I just had a quick, I did have a, um, couple of comments, but they are kind of tied to the engineer's report, so I'm happy to wait. I mean, they're related to that, so, I mean, they're
Yeah, I, I guess from, procedurally, uh, the board has any questions of Michelle? Yeah, I, I guess from procedurally, uh, the board has any questions of Michelle, ask them, you could ask the public. And she gave very limited testimony. There can't be too many questions asked of her um, based on her testimony. Uh, I'd rather not just then go directly to Jason and Doug, because then we have three witnesses that are going to be being asked questions and it'll get terribly out of control.
Alright, so, so we'll move forward with the board if they have any questions of what Michelle testified to today.
Barbara, Jim Henry, I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Uh, for Michelle. Michelle, would you go to page two? Um, the uh, item C, uh, the last line doesn't make any sense. Should it be defined herein and all projects subject to municipal review?
Can you say it again for me?
The last line.
Mm-hmm.
It says, re- right now, it's defined herein, project subject to municipal review. Should that be um, defined herein and all projects subject to municipal review? I'm just questioning the wording on it.
Right. This will be up to all major developments is defined herein. Um, yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, page six.
Um, second and, okay.
Page six, um, number four. Uh, somehow rather that, eh, please explain what that, what that really means. Uh, I'm having trouble.
You mean.
Figuring out.
Your major development. Right?
Yes, yeah, uh. Yes, major development, item four.
So a combination of either of numbers two and three, that total an area of one quarter acre of more. So if you create a quarter, one quarter acre of regulated impervious surface and you create a quarter of regulated motor vehicle service. So that's the driveway I was talking about earlier.
Okay.
And so then the, the same surface shall not be counted twice when determining if the combination area equals one quarter acre or more.
Okay, well, seems to me that if you uh, add uh, two and three, you come up with at least a half acre. Doesn't it make sense to say a quarter acre in number four or?
This is Mike. I think what it's saying is that a portion of both regulated impervious surface and regulated motor vehicle surface, if they add up to a quarter acre or more, then that counts as a major development. And I'll just add that this was, this, we didn't change any of this. This was language straight from the DEP. It looks like um, model ordinance. Yeah.
Yeah, somehow I was just, I, maybe I was just getting tired. I didn't, I, I just couldn't comprehend what it was. Okay, thank you. Um, page five, will you step back a, a second to page five? Uh, low impact.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, fourth line up from the bottom, what is a core forest?
I'm going to be truthful. I personally do not know what is a core forest. This is a language that came from the city engineer.
Let's ask him when he, he talks about his report. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to page thirty-one. Uh. The last line under B one. Um. Is it only for major developments or should it be for every development?
You mean, you're talking about site development stormwater plan approval?
It was, we're talking about here the general maintenance, B one, page thirty-one. And it says, uh, excuse me, the maintenance plan for the stormwater management uh, measures incorporated into the design of the major development. Shouldn't it be all developments?
I'm not, I'm, I'm looking for where this is, because this is not on my.
Page thirty-one, last line.
Keep going, it's thirty dash fifty-eight dot eleven. So keep dot eleven.
Okay.
Okay, there. Now, it's, it's the next page on thirty, in your case, thirty-three. Um.
Oh, okay.
B.
Okay.
Under general maintenance, number one, that's what Jim is asking about. And this is
Right.
uh, from the state. Um, so I mean, go ahead, Michelle.
Um, let me think one sec.
Michelle, you don't have to answer me now. I'm just asking whether that maybe should be all developments that we're talking about.
Not sure about that because I'm unsure, because we go on to number two, what the maintenance plan should consist of. And I'm not sure if, any, if it's a minor development, if we want a plan that consists of what's in number two. Because it may pertain to a ma, you know, to a major development, but not necessarily to a one family or two family house.
Okay, maybe I need to re- read that total in its totality again.
Right, because I, I don't think that you'd want the same uh, maintenance schedule for a minor versus a major development.
Yes, you're, you're absolutely correct. Okay, I'll read that again. And my final question is, uh, we go to the penalty uh, insert.
Right.
Uh, the second portion of that, where we talk, we start with additional, additionally, any person. Uh, yes, that, the last paragraph there, is that uh, could it be possible that that both paragraphs could pertain to the same person and we're finding somebody twice for the same thing? I think the first paragraph, you're talking about a uh, corporation or you're talking about the person who uh, or the entity uh, that made the um prepare the certification. Now you're talking about an individual. Would that possibly be the same?
Uh, give me a second to think about this.
Well, while we're talking about other things, I just asked the question so that uh, if it pertains to the same, do we want? Do you want that to happen?
To use the word responsible parties instead of any person?
Um, I, I, I didn't get that far, Michelle. I just asked the question because as I read, as I read that, uh, it, I thought it might pertain to the same person that you're doing this, you're penalizing the same person twice for the same thing. If we're talking about two different entities, fine.
Yes, yes, it is. Meaning it's talking, one is, is talking about a responsible party and the other one's talking about any person. One is talking about the responsible party and their failure to do maintenance or reporting. The next paragraph talks about anyone who constructs alters, repairs, someone who doesn't necessarily get an approval or file a maintenance plan.
Okay.
Parties.
Okay. Alright. I didn't look at it that way, but I see where you're coming from. Okay. And that's the extent of my uh, comments on the ordinance. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask uh, on the review letter.
Does, uh, does anyone else from the board have any questions on what Michelle has presented so far before we get to um, the engineer's letter? Anyone on the board?
Actually, I have, it's just a procedural thing on page twenty-five, D variances. Um, the only thing, I, and I have no idea what the answer is at this point. It's just more of a question for procedural purposes and different jurisdiction of either board in the city. Um, A, we should make sure we understand whether what's being requested is a design exception uh, or a variance, different, different criteria. And also the council should consider how, how this is going to be handled, because if it's a uh, if it's a variance, it wouldn't go uh, for a single family or a two family, that's not subject to site plan, wouldn't go before a planning board. It's simple if it's a large scale project where the planning board already has jurisdiction, we can handle it that way. If it's not, the planning board has no jurisdiction on site, there's no site plan requirement for a single or a two family uh, isolated lot situation. So uh, we would wind up for a design exception or a variance, sending an applicant, especially like a single family homeowner, homeowner, over to the zoning board just for that. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that, but I'm asking if the council could consider that perhaps another mechanism could be uh, taken care of on an administrative level for a single family home that uh, would address it. If, if of course you have to, you, you send it, but if we can avoid sending the single family homeowner who's requesting something uh, for a, a design exception for, under, under, as it's defined here, uh, maybe uh, there's another mechanism that you would avoid having to spend uh, all that time, money and effort for a single family homeowner. Other than, yeah.
So as we talk about this, um, that's one of the things I think when Jason talks about his report, we're going to talk about.
Okay.
Because way I, you know, we view it at our offices, whether you're asking for a design waiver or a variance and you're a single family homeowner, you end up at the zoning board anyway.
Right.
That's why we put some things here that gave the city engineer um, a, a, so, ability to mix and match different methods for stormwater control.
Okay.
Try to avoid the single family or, or homeowner from going from a board to say, to, to be able to work with that applicant and come up with a solution and that'd be acceptable to the engineer.
So it's, there's a mechanism already incorporated to try and alleviate the burden on the single family homeowner through the engineering.
Right, under minor develop, under minor development.
Yeah, right. No, I get that. Major different, that's, but okay, I, then, then it's already addressed. Okay.
You bring up a good point, because one of the things I think we failed to do, because we took the model ordinance, we never specify, well, we're, because we're calling it where it goes under design standards, it's considered a design standard.
Okay.
But because this is the model ordinance, there's various language in here, um, except for a language here that we added here, um. With that, that's up to the board if they want it to be design waiver or variance.
The board would.
Well, I see like that tonight, because the language.
Oh, you mean the recommendation, not a. It shouldn't be clearly defined when it comes before a board as to whether it's a waiver or an exception or a variance.
I'm seeing this as a design exemption, but I think we need to do a little bit of language cleanup, because we took language from the model ordinance. Like here's an example. Um, where it's with a waiver, it says waiver or variance, because it was the model ordinance.
Okay.
And it was written for a municipality to have flexibility of what they wanted to do. So we have a few of those in here, except the language that we added, that T and M added. H. We, we called out a variance, variances, a variance from strict compliance with the requirements of this section may be granted. So here we called it out as a variance.
Uh, what should it be?
Can I offer something here that might?
Yeah, let's, let, uh, that, let's get Jason as well as uh, Michael and Donna sworn as well, because this.
Oh, Michael and Donna left the meeting.
Oh.
I didn't think.
Okay.
I'm here.
Oh, Donna's here, because Michael left the meeting.
I may not live in town, but I still care.
Yeah, but, okay, get sworn in, but Michael left the meeting.
All right, Jason and Donna, please raise your right hands, please.
So.
I only swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please, ladies first, if you don't mind, let's have Donna give her name and her affiliation with the board, and then Jason, please.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitcher, board engineer.
And not to leave you out of the mix, Doug, do you need to be sworn for this or is Jason going to handle this or are you going to both do it?
Uh, Jason will handle it.
Okay, okay, go right ahead. This way, uh, we can go from there. Go ahead, Jason.
So this, this issue in the model ordinance of the variance or waivers came up in a seminar. I, I know there's some uh, people on the board that are knowledgeable on this stuff firsthand. So uh, if I speak out of order here, please let me know. Uh, this is a major rewrite of uh, the stormwater regulations in New Jersey. And while they've been out for about a year and there's been seminars and continuing ed to learn about them, we're only just starting to get into how to apply them in practice. So it's really only going to start sinking in, basically starting now and moving forward. So that being said, I was at one of the uh, seminars with the DEP where they were describing this and the question came up, what's the difference between a variance and a waiver? And the answer from the DEP was the variances are intended at the municipal level, the waivers are intended at the state level. They're two different things. That, that's how it was described to the question. I just wanted to throw that in there, because that was your topic of discussion.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Yeah, it, it may also be that, no, you've got a whole bunch of legislation here. You know, you, you, in law, you write things, you close two doors, you open up a third. And you have to have things in application before you start seeing the real effect in the world. You know, you, you, you're, you're right legislation, you're right ordinances. You think you're doing a good job, but you're not seeing the forest through the trees at times. And then something will come up. I would have to think that something as extensive as this is something that may be subject to uh, future modifications. If you find out that in practice, it, something doesn't make sense, whether it's a variance or some other portion of it. Um, so it could be that kind of situation where we have to see how it plays out. You got to start the game and see how the game progresses and then uh, go back to the drawing board at some point in the future and make a couple of changes. I mean, we've done that constantly in my tenure as board, both board attorney uh, position. And um, well, I don't know, maybe that's what may be the case for this. Don't know.
I can, I can uh, throw out another thought as, as uh, you consider variance or waiver. Um, this, the stormwater stuff here, obviously with what the DEP went through to write these new regs and now implementing them, it's serious stuff. It, it is as significant as it gets in land development in New Jersey. So variances have a higher burden of proof on an applicant than does a design waiver. So it, it seems to me, in my opinion, that I would lean in the variance direction for this stuff.
Okay.
If, if you're in front of a board.
Yeah, to me, it, it doesn't matter to me which one. I just want to make sure I know ultimately when an application comes in before either board, which one it is, you know, that it's, I, I don't want to sit there and fight with attorneys who want to grapple with me and tell me that it's a waiver or an exception and the standard of proof is lesser than a variance, that, that kind of thing. That's all I'm in. That's all I am imagining going forward. But we'll see. Okay.
I was just gonna say, right now it's sick, where, where it sits now, it's considered um, a design waiver, but we can easily change that by adding a sentence in, in the section, like it did at the, in the other part, that. in, in the section, like it did at the, in the other part, that. Um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at to the other part I was in. This is section, we would put, this is the minor development, we would put a similar statement about a variance in, in here saying that, you know, it's, it's all variance. If that's where we want to go.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does any other board members have a question?
Um, I was thinking, I'm, I don't, but I was, I was thinking that perhaps we should let, um, Jason go through what he has. And then we could go one more time with questions from the board and then bring in the public for questions. And so that we have the full picture because
Okay.
you really don't have the full picture.
Okay.
Right, and Jason's probably in, you know, the better person to get into the details than me.
All right, Jase, uh, can we bring up, uh, the insight letter, um, on the screen?
So, uh, Barbara, how do you prefer to do it? Do you want me to go through each point in the letter or do you guys want to fire off questions?
Um, I'd, I'd like, actually, I, I would like you to do an overview of your letter.
Sure.
Of which pieces are already in the, have already been put into the ordinance, which ones you're suggesting as additions.
Okay, so.
And so we know where we stand, so then questions can be asked on the full picture.
Okay. So I'll give you an overview. So the letter that's up on the screen right there looks like the February eighteenth letter. My first letter that I wrote was February eighth, and that was before the city wrote the uh, updated stormwater control ordinance. So once I received the updated, uh, I wrote the new letter, that's the February eighteenth letter that was up on the screen a minute ago. So, go, uh, going through point by point, in the first point, I was just talking about how it's a major overhaul and I was trying to make the point that if anybody is concerned about, uh, scrutinizing this ordinance for the sake of making sure that, uh, there's a certain level of protection from this ordinance for the city in terms of stormwater runoff, I just wanted to assure everybody, these are heavy-duty regulations. We, we had prior to two thousand four, when we did site plan, design and whatnot, we had some pretty stringent stormwater regulations. Then the two thousand four stormwater rules came, came around and it turned our world upside down. And it doubled what we had to do for stormwater, just speaking, uh, in general terms. This is a similar thing. This is a major rewrite. So the DEP's model ordinance that, uh, came across your desk first from the city is serious stuff. And it's going to engage developers a lot more to get, uh, to take an active role in managing stormwater in the city. So right off the bat, the model ordinance is, is going to make a big difference in a positive way for the city. Then the, uh, the city went ahead and updated those rules and made them more stringent. Uh, so it's all the better. So that's really the point I was trying to make in, in, uh, number one.
Can we, can we, I'm sorry, can we have someone share this?
Irene, are you able to share it? Or do you want me to share it?
No, I can, I can share it and, and this might be a good time to um, put that into the record as exhibit B B three. I'm sorry, that's not it.
That's the one.
That's it.
Yep.
I'm going to bring up the document. There we go.
All right, so.
Actually, Irene, if we don't, it's not, it's cut off on the screen.
But it's also fuzzy.
Would it help if you hit that button next to the, uh, the zoom bar, to the left of the zoom bar? The bottom right? Can't remember what that button's called.
No.
Presentation button.
Oh, oh, yes, go back to what you did.
Better?
You had it and then it went back.
Yeah.
Whatever you had hit before that, yes. Or it's your computer doing something.
Is, is that not it?
It, it flashed for a second, literally, and then went back to this bizarre thing on our screens.
Okay, so not this.
It is, it is the correct document, but
This view?
Not, we can't see it that well.
You, you might just be sharing PowerPoint and not your whole screen, maybe? Yeah, you were just sharing PowerPoint, I think.
How about that?
There you go.
Okay, Jason, you're on.
Oh, okay. All right, number two, to summarize. So the, the DEP's rules and the model ordinances apply to major development. And in very general terms, what that means is a project that proposes to disturb an acre or more or create a quarter acre of new impervious area. Now, there's nuances to that and what kind of impervious, but whatever. Just the, the focus there is the threshold, the level of development that they're triggering these rules for. One of the comments we made early on, and we weren't the only ones clearly, was that small, smaller projects in the city need some attention as well because they're not really covered in the ordinance. Uh, and there's different ways of going about that, and the result is, um, what the, what the city did here is they introduced the idea of minor development. I think that's a good way to capture these smaller projects. So minor, minor development, they're defining as, uh, creating impervious surface of a thousand square feet or more or disturbing five thousand square feet or more. So that's way under the, the definition of major development or the threshold of major development, I should say. So that's going to cover a lot of projects. And I haven't had any discussion with anyone, but I'm assuming that the, the intent for setting that threshold for minor development is that if you're under a thousand square feet of new impervious or five thousand square feet of disturbance, it's a small enough project that somebody shouldn't have to shoulder the burden of adding a stormwater system. You know, like putting a deck in your backyard or something like that, so.
Right, Jason, we were thinking even someone who doesn't have a driveway, creating a driveway.
Yeah, yeah, that's another good example there. So that, um, I, I think that's good and that makes the rules very stringent. Uh, and of course, in introducing the, the threshold of minor development, there was a section added to the ordinance defining what to do in minor development, and I made comments on that later. So that summarizes number two. Uh, let's see, number three is Yeah, so that was the same thing where now we're able to, um, there's going to be a level of control that's, that's imposed upon smaller developments. I made a mention in my original letter on the eighth, February eighth. It's not in the eighteenth. Oh, it's in number four. Yeah, I added it to number four in the, uh, February eighteenth letter. So I, I can't remember if everybody on the board today was on the board when we had the project come in uh, in the waterfront redevelopment area, which was a larger project and had a stormwater component to it. Uh, but there was, there was a debate about whether projects in the waterfront redevelopment area uh, should be subject to any stormwater management. And redevelopment council was consulted and they came back with the recommendation based on their read of all the rules that are in place that, uh, developers in the waterfront redevelopment area are not required to do any further stormwater management. It's handled on a regional le- level throughout the waterfront redevelopment area. It, it caused, uh, it caused some frowns, not as many smiles. Um, you know, depending who you're talking to, you might get a good review or bad review of that interpretation. That, I believe, is not going to apply to the stormwater control ordinance because the waterfront redevelopment plan is going to prevail and the CAFRA approval is going to prevail. But I keep mentioning it because I know there's a big concern about it, at least with a number of the board members, if not all. Uh, and I know there's a lot of talk and chatter, uh, throughout the city about uh, what happens in the waterfront redevelopment area during heavy rainstorm. So I just bring it up as food for thought.
Well, let me address that, Jason. First of all, I've had a conversation with CAFRA. They're going to be, um, sending the, uh, the, the, to the AG, to the state AG if this will apply to that two thousand five CAFRA permit that's on that level. And then here at the city level, we do believe, and working with redevelopment council, we do believe that this ordinance that it, that ISTAR will have to comply or ISTAR subsequent redevelopers, whomever in the waterfront will have to, it has to apply, otherwise it makes the city out of compliance with the state. So we're, we're, and also, uh, ISTAR has agreed to a certain level, at least on the model ordinance level, that they recognize that they will have to comply with the model ordinance. So we're, we're aware of that and we're working on it, but at the end of the day, the intent is that the all projects in the waterfront will have to comply with this ordinance.
Now, now, Michelle, may I ask if they have to do, if it hasn't been determined that they have to comply with the city's ordinance or the state's ordinance?
We, it's, it's, um, two tracks. Meaning that we're working to make sure that they have to comply with the city ordinance. Well, like I said, I reached out to CAFRA to get the interpretation of having to comply with the state model ordinance through CAFRA. Um, one of the things with the, how this is written, almost all the, all the projects in the waterfront will be a major development. And that it kind of won't matter so much which one they have to comply with because for a major development, they're basically the same, except for the penalty section, but the penalty section, they'll have to comply with ours. So, um, one way or the other, there, there's going to be compliance.
I think that's great. And that, that should make those that are concerned, uh, a little more comfortable. Okay, uh, moving on to number five in the February eighteenth letter. Um, talking about the, uh, discussion of minor developments and how that's regulated in this proposed ordinance. They're just talking about in practice of what we've seen uh, throughout the years of applications that have come into the board. There may be projects that are smaller than minor development, and that's pretty small. We just talked about what the threshold is for minor development. It, it is really small. It's not a huge impact. But, you know, standard convention and standard engineering practices, if you're going to improve a piece of property, don't send more runoff to your neighbor. Even if it's a gallon, while that doesn't seem like much, it, it could cause an issue. So using Michelle's example of what if somebody just wants to put in a driveway? Well, now you're going to take a grassed area, you're going to pave it, so numerically, you're going to increase the runoff. And, and it's, it should be relatively simple as long as the existing topography works with you, that you can get that water out to the street or you can use pervious pavement or a dry well or something like that. So my only suggestion in, in number five was to add, uh, a provision in there somehow that in no case should runoff increase to adjacent properties. Uh, even if it's less than what is considered the threshold of a minor development. So that's just a minor suggestion.
Because right now we have that covered under minor. But you're saying that we, there should just be a statement, it's for any form of development.
Right, so really if it's less than a minor development, they should just grade that water away from a neighbor. That's what we've been holding people to over time, so I figured. And, and nobody's really pushed back too hard. I think the board found it made sense.
Right, and we can make that change.
Yeah.
And.
That makes sense. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, so Jason, what you're saying is, is a should, not a shall, right? Because it would be unfortunate to get in a situation where someone, you know, doesn't increase impervious by less than a thousand square feet, right? And now they're, now they're going to have to, you know, basically be reviewed for stormwater.
So that, that gets into another, well, no, I'm not suggesting that they be reviewed for stormwater, but if they have to do a grading plan, you know, if you're going to put something in and you have topography, let, let's try and get the water away from the neighboring properties. Um, that was another, uh, recommendation that I made. It might be the next one, actually. Where sometimes you get small projects and they're over on the, uh, impervious coverage limit. Or whether it's proposed to go over or existing is over and proposed is going to increase. We've always in practice had people manage the runoff from the excess coverage. Right? So sa- same idea here with, when you talk about these small things, you know, you want to be careful about the death by a thousand cut situation. Um, it, it's not my intention to make a mountain out of a molehill, absolutely not. I don't want to do that. For simple stuff, it should stay simple. But at the same time, you know, if somebody just wants to put in a simple berm, that's great, just don't force the runoff to your neighbor. If you want to put in a driveway, that's great, just don't send the runoff to the neighbor. If there's an extenuating circumstance where a property slopes in from the street to the backyard and there's the inverts and groundwater, nothing's working with you, there should be a provision to be excused from that. But generally speaking, we just want to prevent, that's what we want to see with the grading plans, just keep the water away from the neighbor.
Jason, is there a distinction here, this is Lexus, Taylor, board member, tween public and private lots? And the only reason I say that is because we know that public streets bear the huge burden of managing stormwater. I could see at a certain point, for instance, having to create green infrastructure or some kind of dry well or cistern in Sunset Park in order to deal with quality and quantity of water going down our public streets. And I just want to make sure that we're not precluding our public parks from, or our city from making a determination that we could do green wa- or green stormwater controls on our public parks because it's an adjoining property.
Because it's an adjoining property, what do you mean?
I know, Jason, it's a neighboring property in that case, even though it's the same owner, the city owns. Even think about, well, Main Street, the county owns it. At a certain point, if Main Street starts to develop too much of a burden of stormwater, wouldn't you want to put some, maybe like a dry well or a control right in Sunset Park?
Yeah, I don't think anything would preclude you from doing that because you would be managing the stormwater, right? If you send the stormwater over there and you have the rights to that property and you install something to manage that stormwater, I, I don't see anything in here that would preclude you from doing that.
Okay, even though it is a neighboring property, like you, you're, you have full impervious on one and then you're managing it on a neighboring property.
Um, so i- if I was to relate that to private development, if somebody owned a piece of property, uh, two pieces of property next to each other, uh, even if they're under different names, it's, it's the same people, they just have to give permission to each other to do work on the other's property. So in that case, if somebody wanted to send all the runoff to the neighboring property, but then on the neighboring property, they managed it, I wouldn't have a problem with that. And I, I don't think there's anything in the rules that precludes that.
Okay, just making sure. I'm building a pump station right now, which is actually sending runoff to a neighboring property. And we had to apply for that, so it's a similar situation.
That is probably two separate owners, right? There's a source party and then there's a municipality or something.
Yeah.
So then you'd have to deal with that. But yeah, if, if you control both, which is the other scenario you gave me, if it was the city, uh, I think that would be fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're also giving the ability of our city to maximize our parks to control stormwater without it being a neighboring property. And I think you're covering for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, let's see, number six. Uh, this is where I made the recommendation. The, there's not many ordinances we deal with that only ha- only regulate building coverage and not block coverage.
We're going to regulate. We're going to regulate lot coverage. That's in the zoning amendments we reviewed tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that one. Oh, that's great. I I was also going to say that there's some creative strategies in the stormwater ordinance. That doesn't necessarily address the lock coverage issue, but it it really gets to the same end. So between the ordinance revisions that you just mentioned, Michelle, and what's in the stormwater control ordinance for minor development, I think we essentially have this covered. So that was a success. Yeah. Belt and suspenders. Um, number seven, I was talking about deed notices. Now, this is something in practice that we've been requiring applicants to do all along. And it's nice now that um it it's put in the ordinance and it's required. Nobody's ever made a beef about it. It's really not too big a deal. The idea is if you're putting some sort of stormwater system on your property to to manage a situation, even maybe it's even just a small dry well for roof runoff. At some point in the future, somebody's going to dig it out, block it up, whatever. They're going to sell the property. The next person will never know it's there. So that's why the DEP has implemented that strategy and why we've adopted it in the city for even the smaller projects. And now it's in there uh as a requirement. So I think that's a a good thing.
So I have to bring up a scenario because I see this, of course, for new construction. But let's bring up a scenario of someone puts in a driveway. And the the items we require of them is is more um landscaping in nature, paver uh pervious pavers. Do you still think that a deed restriction would be necessary?
If if pervious pavers are put in as a strategy to manage stormwater, then they should stay in and they should continue to function. So yes, I think that should be on the deed.
Okay.
If they're a bonus, but not really needed, but nice, then maybe not. But if they are a means of managing stormwater, then yes, I think it should go on the deed.
And I think that, oh, go ahead, Michelle.
No, no, go ahead. Then I'll ask mine.
So um, Jason, I just think that that's an important um distinction because it does use the word any project that requires, right? So that requirement would be in perpetuity deed restricted. I'll give a scenario like hypothetical, like a neighbor of mine, I'll use the word I, like put in a dry well um above and beyond what's required to manage like 3,800 gallons of stormwater so that I could treat stormwater on site. The only reason in which I would record that in a deed is if the city developed, let's say later on, a stormwater utility and there was some incentive for that bonus that would reduce my fee or something. But you only have to deed record what's required as part of the redevelopment.
It's an excellent sample. I totally agree. Yep.
Totally hypothetical. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. And then so that was um.
Right. So then, Jason, for number seven, provided the board wants to put in the deed restriction, what section would you add that language?
I think you have it in there, don't you?
No, I don't remember. Sorry. Okay.
Oh, you know what it is? I I know what it is. The the recommendation we're making again, so the mo- the ordinance that you have requires it for major and minor developments. Our recommendation, just like that other one we were talking about, is to require it for any development.
I don't know if I I truthfully feel comfortable making it required for everyone and anyone.
If it was, I I and I hear what you're saying. I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. That's not fair. But going back to your example of if somebody just wants to put in a dry well, I'm sorry, driveway. If for some reason, let's say it puts them over on impervious coverage and they have to come in for, actually, no, you don't regulate that. See, there's that problem again.
A what? We don't regulate what?
Lot coverage. It's it's just the building coverage. Oh, you're going to. You're going to. All right. So they put in the driveway and let's say it puts them over on coverage, right? The mitigation for that is to manage the stormwater one way or another, probably on site because you're over on what the zone allows for coverage. So if you have to put in a small dry well or something like that, that is a structure that would be required and should probably be on the deed.
Right. But like, one of the things going back to what I talked about for minor development, like even our section for minor development, actually, I'm comfortable, gives like choices, like it says, the stormwater management feature shall be protected from future development by conservation easement, deed restriction, or other acceptable legal measures.
Mm hmm.
So I like that. That gives us a little bit of flexibility. Because in case we again, have a situation where maybe deed restriction doesn't make sense and there's another legal measure.
Well, um, what we've been requiring is uh deed notices. I'm no lawyer, but I I think that's different than a deed restriction. You're making people aware that it's there and it can't go anywhere.
Right.
Of restriction, but it could move, it could change, as long as something is their equivalent.
Um, from a legal perspective, if these, these are going to essentially be covenants that are going to run with the land because they're conditions of approval. So they wouldn't necessarily be characterized as notices. They would be restrictions, covenants.
Okay.
Left forth as an amendment to deed. Uh, we've done it. Uh, zoning and planning boards have done it for years, especially in the zoning uh use variance situation. Because you have people making representations on the record that five, 10 years from now, all of a sudden you go there and things that were part of the approval process, they're not there anymore. Okay, for example, they pave over the driveway and now there's a water problem with the contiguous property. Okay, uh, anybody looking at that deed is fair, it's fairly enforceable. The city can certainly enforce it. And anybody buying the property would be put on notice through their attorney that there are covenants running with that land, one of which is that you have to maintain that driveway in the conditions it's it's in or an underwater filtration system, underground uh drainage filtration system, something like that, so that they, A, they can't come in and say, no, we didn't know. And B, you have a reasonable way to enforce it. Because you have plenty of instances throughout the city over the decades where things were done. Uh, and there's no record and how they got there. And if you really want to tighten things up going forward, this is the way to do it with your restrictions.
Well, but Jack, I was thinking about stuff that doesn't go to the board.
That's a different story.
Right. That's why, but we have the flexible language in there so that it can be um what Jason said, like more of a of a a notice. Or it can be a restriction or it could be a covenant easement. So there's a, so we have flexibility.
Okay.
Well, and the reason, this is Alexis, the the reason I would support that is because it could include a performance standard. Whereas if you just deed restricted a dry well, I mean, this is extreme circumstance, but I could turn my dry well into a pool.
Right.
They'll claim it was a dry well. It doesn't perform as a dry well, but it's a hole in the ground that holds water.
Yeah, I I agree. You 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 need to do it in terms of restrictions, easements and covenants. Yeah.
So are we saying that we're okay with this or changes have to be made?
To to clarify, the the recommendation I'm making and and honestly, you can take it or leave it. I'm just bringing it up for thought is the deed notice um include any development. So that would be a major, a minor, or less than a minor. If a stormwater system is required to mitigate runoff from a property, that that was what I was aiming towards.
Right, and we're covered on the minor.
Yes.
What I I think we need language because I don't believe the language is in there for a major for for that. So I think we have to replicate the some of the language in another section here. And clearly, if something appears on site plan that's part of mitigation, then that's clearly your call and the board's call for it to be conservation easement, deed restriction, deed notice.
I think it's covered in major, isn't it?
I just did a search and I don't see it for major, but um, that's I said, am I missing it?
Yeah, I think it's um, let me find this. It's on page 16. I don't know what section that is. I'm going up. I gotta go way up. Thirty dash fifty eight point four.
Fifty eight point four, right. I'm in there.
And M, M is in Mary. Hopefully I didn't miss a level.
M, 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 M. Oh, that's because it's a deed notice, not a restriction. Eh, okay. I mean, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Yeah, just food for thought. That's what I got.
Right. So so to be clear, we're covered for major, we're covered for minor, anything less than that, that's what we're not covered for right now.
And and I think that would be a somewhat rare situation, but it might come up and maybe you put value on that.
Okay, does that deed? All right. So then that's up to the board to decide if they want something like that added.
But I I feel that M covers it in the, or no, that's for major, any storm management measure authorized. But that that's for the major, but I where would we, we really have a situation where it's not covered by either? Unless it's voluntary?
Well, going back to uh, you know, the, I guess it could be anything, but the driveway sample, right? So if somebody just wants to put in a driveway where they don't have one, they don't reach the threshold of minor development, but it puts them over on lock coverage.
Well, if it puts them over on lock coverage, they're going to the board.
Correct.
Come to us anyway.
Or the zoning board.
Yep, there's still not a minor development when they come to the board. Can we require them to put a deed notice if there's some sort of stormwater system that they have to put in? If they're just grading, nothing's required, but like a dry well or pervious pavement or something like that.
If they're over coverage and they're going to the zoning board, you could require them to do the stormwater mitigation to mitigate the variance.
Yes.
Without it being codified.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Everyone's good with that. Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Good, Barbara?
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with that because that will cover the other things that might fall out.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. If if the rest of the board is okay with it.
Good.
Okay.
All right. So moving on to number eight from our uh February 18th letter. Really what I'm doing in there is I'm calling out something that was added to uh Asbury Park's ordinance above what the state put out. Is a definition of low-impact development techniques. It's mentioned in the scope and purpose section of the model ordinance, but that's the only place it's ever mentioned. So uh this ordinance now defines what that is because scope and purpose encourages people to use low-impact development techniques. So now it's defined. So I was just calling that out as a as a good ad. Uh, number nine, there there was, I I mentioned number nine. So this, there's some places in the proposed ordinance that call out per city engineer, and then there's some places that say per city engineer or board engineer where applicable. There was some confusion on this some years ago. I couldn't possibly tell you when, but it's been since I was here. Where which engineer was an applicant supposed to go to? And ultimately, they were they were sent to the board and the board engineer. And I I think speaking about Jack about, speaking to Jack about that way back when, I I think he feels it's clear that if there's an application to the board, it's the board engineer. But when I saw that in there, it just reminded me of that whole scenario. So I just made this the suggestion that should it say city engineer or board engineer where applicable in all cases.
Right, Irina, will you scroll up to number nine? Okay.
Well, in this case, you're saying in the ordinance that we have, if there's any place that it says city engineer, it should be replaced with city engineer or board engineer where applicable.
Yeah, so in thirty dash fifty eight point seven A four, so that's on page 25, the minor development add-on.
Yep.
Says if the city engineer or board engineer were applicable. So that that's the term I'm suggesting to repeat. Uh, where is it? I think it's above that. Yeah, number two, uh, subject to review by the city engineer.
Right, and you're right. We will change that because that was the intent for us to change that.
Yeah. It it's funny you use those words because that was the interpretation those years ago when it came up that the attention is depending where the application is, that's the engineer that'll that'll review it.
Right.
So we're see, so that's what we're suggesting. They will do a scan on the document, any place that it says city engineer, we should replace it with city engineer or board engineer where applicable.
Right.
Okay. That's fair.
All right, number 10A in our February 18th letter. Um, so this is talking about the uh for minor development. This this goes to the requirements for uh design for minor developments. And it talks about the 95% percentile storm, which must be retained on site utilizing green infrastructure. I believe, Michelle, that that comes out of the LEED standards, the U.S. Green Building Council's LEED standards for design. Um, what I fear is going to happen with that is uh engineers aren't going to know what to do with that. I spoke to uh a whole bunch of engineers when I saw that and asked who was familiar with it. I thought it was a typo and I thought it was essentially referring to the one-year storm. Uh, nobody else I spoke to had an idea except one guy happened to go to a LEED course a couple of years back. And they went through an exercise on how to calculate it and he explained to me how they did it. And he said it's it's a little complicated. Now, I have a little bit of ignorance here because I don't know if these, this information has since been tabulated. Uh, but what I'm suggesting is we come up with something that an engineer can use. Whether we give a rainfall distribution table, like the DEP does for the water quality storm, or we could even use the DEP's water quality storm. Uh, I'm good either way. I just want to make sure I, if this goes out like this, I guarantee the first engineer that goes through it is going to call me and they're going to say, how do I do that one?
I would support Jason in that. This is Alexis. I actually, I don't know what the 95 percentile storm is.
Yeah, so.
It's not really in the vernacular.
Yeah, yeah. The the way the guy described it to me is um, you have to get rainfall data for the region you're looking at for a 10-year period. And then there's a series of calculations you go through with that 10-year data and you come up with a number. So I I'm oversimplifying, but it was quite a process. He said it was pretty complicated.
This is Jen Sauter. I just have a quick question on that one. That was one of my notes. Um, in that case, uh, would it make any sense to be allowed to do either way, just in case in the very you know, positive thinking that somebody, there already was, the engineer was already doing the calculations for LEED, so and to prevent redundancy if they were doing it?
I think that's a great idea. I hadn't thought of that. Um, the only.
The only thing is that how do you know if they're comparable without understanding the 95%? I think that's totally a great idea. Um, it's just that I don't know that 95 percentile storm, in some cases, it may be a two-year, in some cases, it may be a five-year based on the 10-year average, it sounds like.
Yeah, I was going to say the same exact thing. As long as the options are relatively comparable, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, the option is fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess it's just how would we get from point eight, I mean, to be sure that it was um.
Well, I think you could say, or the more restrictive of the two.
That's that's true, too. Yeah, that would work.
You know.
Then then you may be forcing them to figure out the percentile storm again.
Hmm, that's true, too. Uh, I guess it's do a little bit of looking to just see if the comparison of the two.
Is it meaningful and um Jen, I think you have more experience with LEED, like 95 percentile storm is meaningful in a LEED um context.
Yes, but it doesn't mean that all the engineers doing it would be doing it that way. That's why I want to look back at the guidelines to see if it's how it's worded there. Because if it's if it's something that's not used a lot, then it's irrelevant. Um.
I think if we provided guidance, it would be fi- I mean, the two-year storm and the five-year storm engineers are familiar with because they've been doing it. And then also DEP provides the inch, you know, they provide a whole calculation. So if we were able to provide guidance on it, it would be totally applicable.
If it were, if it's accurate that this 95 percentile storm is pre-calculated and put into the ordinance, then I think we're home free. But what engineers are going to look for is a distribution. So there's going to be a rainfall amount related to time, you know, over time you get more and more and more. That that's what we need to calculate runoff.
So so what are we proposing to close this? So, so what are we proposing to close this up? Are we proposing that we need some time to figure this out? Or what are we, what are we proposing here?
Michelle, what, what you, this is just a suggestion again here, maybe what we could do is huddle up, find what the 95 percentile storm is in Asbury Park, and either we might find that it's gonna be easy enough to share that information in the ordinance, or we can identify a comparable storm, and maybe it's the DEP's water quality storm, and then we can offer the option. But I, I think we gotta start with figuring out what that 95 percentile storm is in Asbury.
Well, I can also go back to the engineer at TNM who assisted in writing it.
Yeah.
Um, I believe this, this might be in the Tinton Falls.
Okay.
But I, talking to the, talking about timing with this, we would, I would ask, I, I would hope we could do this within a week.
I think this might be a quick answer because I'm looking quickly, and I think TNM would probably be able to answer quickly. It looks like LEED has, it's two options, um, one being this and one being more of what's in there, so. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a long drawn out thing to get that answer.
Well, if, if we can get, if, if we can get this answer quickly turned around, then obviously, you know, we have another meeting coming up that we can, uh, do this. I just want to make sure that, that that's the only dangling piece that we have. Or if there are others, we want to know what they are and see if we can make this happen. Because stormwater is, as all of you know, an extremely critical piece of our lives here. So I wanted, I don't, I don't want to do it fast if I don't, I want to do it right. So.
I agree, and I, I think, um, all the suggestions that Jason, um, making here are really about kind of clarifications rather than substantive like content changes. I did, um, I had one more question for Jason, um, regarding the, hold on, in no case. Hold on, I gotta find it, Jason, sorry, I lost it.
I got three more I didn't hit yet, is it one of those?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, all right, I'll, I'll wrap up real quick. Um, so the February 18th letter, number 10, letters B and C. This, this is, again, for regulating minor development. This is talking about gallons of water over a new impervious surface. So to take the word you used before, Alexis, the gallons of stormwater is not really in the vernacular, but if I'm reading this right, I think this is an easy one. So basically what we're gonna do is, we're going, we're going to apply, uh, say under 10B here, two gallons of stormwater for each square foot of new impervious surface. We're gonna get a, a finite, um, volume of water that then has to be managed on site. I think that's the, the intention of the ordinance there, and I think that's an easy one to do. And I just made a comment there in the letter, what it equates to. You know, the two gallons of water, that's the two-year storm, the three gallons of water, that's the five-year storm, so that's a lot of water. Um, so I think those, those are good. That was just, uh, I was clarifying it for myself and figured I'd throw it out there for everybody else in case it made a difference for you, uh, the language that was used. Uh, so I don't think any changes need to be made to that. And then in 10D, the standards for minor development don't address groundwater mounding, and this is something that we have been requiring applicants to do. If there's a stormwater system proposed on a site that's gonna put stormwater into the ground, and it's in a densely developed area, which pretty much all of Asbury Park is, especially if it's close to a property line, we want to make sure that there's gonna be no impact on neighboring structures. And we have had scenarios in the past where we had discussions with applicants. They resisted a little bit, but they understood the requirement, they went and did it, they got bad results, they came back, they changed things to make it work. Um, so I, I think that is an important one. Groundwater should always be checked when you're sending stormwater into the ground.
Right, I'm trying to, because we do require for the major.
Correct.
So then what you're suggesting, we add it as.
For the minor.
Minor under, like, add a letter E?
Um.
Or is it part of the first one? Or is it part of, um, I'm sorry, would I add it as a new number or a new letter?
I think I would, uh, let's see. I'm just reading through them real quick.
Actually, stormwater is follows.
Well, number two, almost gets it, but it doesn't. Uh, sorry, A2. Uh, let's see.
I'll add it to that, though, I can, that's a good place for me to add the additional language, right?
I, I think I'd probably insert a number three, and then three, four, and five become four, five, and six. That way two and three are related and sequential.
Let me make these notes. So make a new number three about mounding.
Yep, just bump the other ones down.
Let's bump others down. Okay.
All right, and then the last comment I made was about the penalties. I think the penalty section is good, and it achieves its purpose. I'm not suggesting it, but I was thinking it, and so I figured I'd throw it out there in case it means something to you. Should the penalty for a major development be higher, or should the penalty for a minor development be lower?
Oh, don't make it lower.
But, but I think that it, that it kind of makes sense that if we're gonna go with that for a major development, that it, I mean, in my opinion, it should be higher than a minor development, but, uh, I'm, I'm open for discussion on that. Anybody?
It's more.
Well, it certainly makes sense, Barbara.
It's, it's more, I have no problem increasing, I think we're limited to what we can max it out at, at 2,000 us per the ordinances we already have. I could be wrong, right, but you can check with Fred, and I think Fred's gonna say 2,000 for max.
I'll check with Fred, yeah.
And if it's not, if not, the council have no problem increasing it.
And if that's the case, I don't think a loss that's in there.
Right, so, okay, so Michelle, we'll, we'll check to see what, how far we can go with that. Um.
How far do we want to go?
Sorry?
So if we can go higher, how high do we want to go?
Let's cross that bridge when we find out if you can.
Well, I, I guess because, so we don't have to, so I could just like say.
Make it, make it 2,000 or 3,000, I, I don't, I don't care. It's an arbitrary number, so.
No, I think it, it came from someone else's ordinance.
Right, and that's Jason knows what other towns have. So I mean, it's something we can find out with, in less than a week.
Yeah, you can find that out with TNM too.
What about 4,000 and 2,000, double?
Right, I believe they took this from another town, what we have in front of us, another town that's one of their clients.
And then, then we can start, we can start with doubling what a minor is and for a major.
Okay, so.
Fair, and then see if we're, we don't want to, you know, go against any other ordinances we have.
Yeah, no, I'll go to Fred, but I also want to make sure I have, you know, um, I, I just want to nip that.
Um, Jason, I'm reminded of my, um, other question, which is again, is a scenario. So, um, this may go back to why it's important to have a waiver rather, um, well, why you want the standard to be a waiver, but, um, Asbury Park is blessed with good soils for now. Um, but I have encountered scenarios where the groundwater is so high that the thought of putting green infrastructure in is essentially like ineffective. If you, if.
Yep.
You have moist land or swampy land or anything, and your ground, and your water table is like three inches below the surface, then green infrastructure isn't gonna make a difference. Is that the instance in which? Like, what if it's actually infeasible, that's a waiver?
Well, okay, so two things come to mind, again, these, these new rules, we're all getting our hands around them, so, um, bear with me. But two things come to mind with that. First of all, I believe the chart in here talks about options for green infrastructure, and there are solutions for shallow groundwater such as a green roof or a cistern. Uh, what else do we have? Uh, vegetative filter strips could work. Grass swales may work, so that there are, those are the minor development BMPs actually. But you could do a green roof. Uh, you could do some sort of filter with an underdrain. Uh, but I also seem to recall in reading through this thing that there is a provision about if it's infeasible. I'll, I'll search for that word.
I'll do it too.
I, I saw that too, this is Jen Sauter.
It's in there.
And I also was gonna say, I, I like, I mean, I understand the point that you're making, Alexis, but the one thing that worries, I mean, I was glad to see the options that were given because I've seen that used as an excuse in other places where, um, well, we can't because of soils, and you know, you can, but there's, you have to use different strategies. So I think it's, I would hate to see it, um, used as an excuse. That's why I thought the options are good.
I found where it's waiver from submission requirements, um, in the major section, so the municipal, this is section letter C, under submission of site development stormwater plan four. And it says, um, I'm sorry, not four, lost my place, eight, waiver from submission requirements. The municipal official or board reviewing an application under this ordinance may in consultation with the municipality's review engineer waive submission of any of the requirements set forth above where it can be demonstrated that the information requested is impossible to obtain, or would create a hardship on the applicant to obtain, and its absence will not materially affect the review process. So actually, no, that's, that's a waiver of submission requirements, I'm sorry.
I think I was thinking of that same section.
I know with the minor port development, we gave those choices, so like we stated, so that there can be a solution of some sort, and that, you know, if the, if the reviewing engineer truly believes there's no solution, which there's always gonna be a solution, then the reviewing engineer can say there's no solution. But I think 99.9% of the time, there'll be a solution of some sort.
Okay, yeah, and I, you know, this is as Jack said, this, I feel like this as an ordinance is 99.5% of the way there, and there may be circumstances that come up that we can't, um, necessarily handle it. But I'll just say generally, I mean, I think that the, what the council has recommended is very, very strong. I think what Jason is recommending doesn't substantially or mat, it offers clarification where probably it's needed for the board's decision.
Hmm.
I have a, I have a great example of that, uh, that point you were just making, Alexis. When, when the DEP put out, I'll call them the new flood hazard regs, which was in 2007, it still feels kind of new. Um, when that first happened, the, uh, it, it started to regulate tidal water bodies, and if you read the rules, it was kind of a roundabout way, but if you read the rules, it basically said you can't put in a dock. You know, if you have a house out, you know, waterfront, you can't put in a dock. And I was in a seminar and that question was asked of, uh, the DEP, and they acknowledged it and said, that has been brought to our attention, and it was an unintended consequence, and we are going to fix it, and they did. So that, that's the most blatant example of what we've been talking about here. We, we're gonna put this into practice and something's bound to come up, and we'll address it.
All right, does, does the board have any other questions for, uh, Jason and Michelle? That they are concerned about?
This is Jen Sauter again, I just wanted to say real, uh, quickly that, I mean, the, basically all of my comments and questions were very aligned with what Jason had in his report, and they were, I think, all just completely addressed by that conversation. But the one que, one, just one more time, if you, Michelle, I'm sorry to ask again, but the, back to item four with the waterfront redevelopment.
Hmm.
So you're, there's these parallel, I'm just trying to understand, make sure I understand, there's parallel paths, right? So you reached out about the CAFRA aspect. Um, and then, but, and because most of it is major, it wouldn't matter, I mean, in other words, it'll be covered one way or the other, but will it, will projects still be covered if the CAFRA response goes one way or the other?
Well, we're redevelopment council, council and myself are, believe that I Star will have, or I keep saying I Star, but really it's gonna be subsequent redevelopers or different entities in the waterfront. That they're going to be required to comply, because if they don't comply, then the city bears the penalty. But also if worse comes to worse, although we don't think we have to do this, we will take this portion of section 30 and we'll give it its own chapter number. But right now redevelopment council doesn't believe we need to do that to make projects in the waterfront comply.
So, so you, 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 are, are we sure that, that this will work out? Or are we, do we need to investigate it and then come back to us?
Hmm, I'll put it this way, we're gonna make something work so that it complies, but I don't believe we need to come back to this board to make sure it complies.
But you understand that this is a great concern of the board.
Oh, yes, that's why I reached out to CAFRA.
And I'm sure of the council also.
And why I've been in discussion with redevelopment council about this.
Okay.
Can, can I request that, uh, Michelle, as, as you navigate through that, and, and if you reach a conclusion, um, and it doesn't involve the board, could you somehow just inform the board so that
Of course.
We're aware, yeah, thank you.
Yes, of course, but the, the thing is, the city, as an entity, the board, the council, the city manager, the planning department, does believe that waterfront development projects must comply. And if we need to change the mechanism to make it comply, we'll change the mechanism.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Does, does anybody else have any other questions of Jason or Michelle before we go to the public?
Uh, Barbara, Jim Henry again.
Okay.
I just want to, uh, go back to, uh, items four and five on Jason's letter, and, uh, I, I, I would like to see a blanket statement, uh, adopting these measures in some way. In other words, uh, I, I totally agree with what Jason has come up with, and can we do this with a blanket statement, uh, somewhere along the line? I, I don't know what section it would be put in, uh, where we would say, we wouldn't necessarily talk about waterfront redevelopment area, but we would say all, uh, uh, major and minor development will, will conform, not just, you know, not just in the waterfront area, but throughout the city.
Michelle, is that there?
Yeah. I mean, that statement is already in there. Or.
So number four.
If not, it should be.
Yeah, no, number four in my letter is, um, talking about uh, involving the waterfront redevelopment area in the new ordinance, which you've covered, Michelle. And number five was about, uh, using the words uh, in no case, that's basically what we're saying is, can we regulate stormwater runoff for projects that are below the threshold of minor development, just to prevent runoff to neighbors? In no case, that's what it is, in no case shall additional runoff be sent to neighboring properties.
That's certainly within reason.
Right, and I have that as a note.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? Before we go to the public? Okay. Uh, any, uh, can, um, Irene, can we open up the questions to the public? questions to the public, please?
Yes, ma'am. I have one hand raised. Mr. Magnoli, go ahead and ask your question.
One second. Mr. Magnoli, since there are two witnesses that spoke, when you asked, please let us know which witness you're asking the question to or of, okay?
Okay, Arnold Magnoli, Four Hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five, the Asbury Park, New Jersey. The Santander Building, I've lived here since two thousand seven. Uh, so I thought that the attorney for the board said after planner finished, that it was better for the public to ask before the letter. But then you proceeded to add the letter so that only the public with a photographic memory could, could really cogently ask questions of what you turned into forty, fifty, or sixty things. Which is a problem with asking questions. The question should have come to Ms. Alonso the minute she finished. Not to add in the city engineer, but it's done. So let me go back to something important for me, I'm trying. But there's just too many things. So Mr. Henry, I think it was, is, 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 is probably the most significant person that I find in this questioning or mix. And that is to make sure that all properties comply. And not, not just that, but if, if I'm not mistaken, I'm gonna ask Ms. Alonso, did she interpret Mr. Henry's uh, comments to mean all properties existing and new? Because if you could add the words existing and new.
Let her answer.
Okay, 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 okay.
So it's any project that, that's creating new runoff? With it, that's not
Okay.
Then a thousand square feet of new runoff?
Okay, so then it's relative to Mr. Henry's question, relative to my question about his question to you, what you're saying is it won't include when you look at Asbury with all the existing things that have been put up that have violated those standards. That this amendments that you're making will not allow the city to go back and say, look, you built this a year and a half ago. And it's really flooding your neighbor's property, it's overburdening the sewer and the street. But we can't do anything about it because you got it in. That's the way you want it to read, I think. In other words, you want it to be any new property, regardless of size, because you've covered all the sizes now. I think you're down to mini projects, which is good. But it seems like when I ask you as a question that you clarify it's only for new. So why do I ask that? I'm gonna ask now, what you're
You're, you're going
Okay, she did answer, she did answer. She said that it only applies to new.
What's your question? Yes, that's correct.
Right, so it only applies to new.
And it applies prospectively, correct.
Okay. I, I don't know what that last comment meant, but the point is, why can't it apply to everything? In other words, when you go around Lake Street and you go around Grand and then Deal Lake Drive and all these flooding Ocean Avenue, Cookman, these are things that have gotten in, so to speak, under the wire. And, and what I'm gonna ask you is, I, I hope Ms. Alonso that you're aware that the lawyers that come before your, these boards are some of the best lawyers that I've ever seen. Uh, you might agree, it's a question, I, I think you would agree. Do you agree?
It's an irrelevant question whether she goes to lawyers.
It's not irrelevant, it's, 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 how is it irrelevant? In other words
You have to, go ahead, but don't ask her about lawyers.
I'm sorry, Mr. Magnoli, I've gone ahead and muted you. Please ask a question that is relevant.
He's muted. You need to unmute him.
Okay, okay. I, I think I said after twelve thousand mutings, I'm getting used to it, so. But uh, so, so you answered that question, so, so now I have another, another question. Could there be added into dovetailing onto what Mr. Henry was pursuing? Could there be a way that you could add into these modifications, these changes, these applications of the hierarchy, which is the, the DEP and, and then the city's uh, stringency on top of it? Could there be a way that in the event that the city with its powers, whatever they are, through zoning or through zoning, let's say enforcement, that in travels, we come upon a project of all sizes that is really pernicious, it's horrible. In, in that it causes flooding to neighbors, burdens the, you know, puts polluted water in the lakes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All this stuff that somehow you could invoke with new language that you could add in addition to what you have, that for egregious observable violators of water quality and quantity runoff, that you could invoke some of these things for them too, like retroactively. Should they be in horrible violation? I'm sure there's a lot of projects that don't cause any problem and their mitigations were fine. But there's a lot that told a big tale about this is gonna work and that's gonna work. And every time it rains, you go to work in a, in a rowboat. So the question is, could you add
Answer that question. Because
Okay, can you add that? Can you add that language?
Legal, let me finish, that's a legal question. You're asking if, if a new ordinance can be applied retroactively. That's your basic question. I get it.
No, no, what we're talking about.
Cannot answer that, stop, mute him, let me finish. She cannot answer that question because you're asking for a legal opinion as to whether or not an ordinance can be applied retroactively or only prospectively. That is a question for the mayor and council and the city attorney. Because they draft the ordinances and adopt the ordinances. We don't, and neither does Michelle. Michelle has given us a report, we're giving them back recommendations of items contained within that report. That's a question, it's a fair question, but you gotta ask that of Fred Verfetto at the time these ordinances are gonna be considered by the mayor and council for adoption. Fair question, but you gotta ask it to them because they're the ones that are gonna legislate these ordinances, not us. And that's a question that the city attorney would have to answer. Can I mute him?
Go ahead, Mr. Magnoli.
I, I don't agree, but let's move on. Uh, Ms. Alonso, you also stated that uh, you, you were using the example over and over about uh, driveways and I guess as, as some kind of metaphor for anything that uh, talks about pervious versus impervious and and I think at one point, is it, is it correct in, in what you're gonna add in as more stringent, more stringent to the DEP is a thousand square feet? Meaning, you, if you mess with or disturb even a, a thousand, ten by a hundred piece of something on whatever size lot that could affect the neighbors, that that now is gonna get a look at it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Uh, ag- again, I'm gonna say I, I would ask that you try and include the language. I'm not gonna ask it because Mr. Serpco's gonna mute me, so let me move on. Uh, so relative to the, the fines that you stated, uh, I I don't, I don't think, at least the developers I know in Asbury and Long Branch and and all around New Jersey, that they would really care about a fine of that magnitude. Uh, and I know are you aware that that would really mean not too much to an I Star, Madison, a Sackman, a Fasano or anybody else? Now, it, could the wording be per day? Because then it starts to mean something. Then someone will think about it. Because I know like in my building, if you do something out of compliance and you get a violation, Mr. Seela comes in and said, until this is fixed, your fine is five thousand dollars a day. Now that's on a condo owner. So it was five thousand dollars a day in Asbury is okay on a condo, a condo owner. Why would a one-time four or two thousand dollar fine bother anybody in Asbury? So when you talk about going to Mr. Refredo, wherever you're gonna go to find out, as the mayor said, the parameters of fine, could you and would you consider the fact that there's no comparison between medium and small developers and private owners and an I Star or a Madison Marquette? I mean, we're talking different pockets there. When, when they, when they wanna skirt or evade or avoid something and you tell them, you do that, it's gonna cost you four thousand dollars. You know, that's already planned into their wanting to do what would cost them.
What's your question? You're testifying like crazy.
Okay, no, I'm not testi- so, so my point is
You've been asking the question for over three minutes. What's the question?
So Ms. Alonso, would you consider uh, much more, asking for much more and frequent uh, fining and violation for the redevelopers and developers? I mean, I'm just a public, um, okay, so, okay, no is your answer? Let me move on.
She didn't answer yet, no, she didn't ask.
I thought she just said no.
No, I said so. So as testified tonight, we're gonna look into raising those fines. It, we're gonna consult with the city attorney if we can raise those, those fines.
Right, and you said, for example, maybe double them, make them four thousand against the big developers. And what I'm trying to ask, would you consider adding frequency to that for the big developers? Meaning, not only do you get a four thousand dollar fine, but if it's egregious and it's causing water damage, it could be per day or per month. Because
Sure, I can do that. So the types of fines in this type of ordinance are different than construction code fines. So Mr., no, Mr. Seela abides by a different code mandated by the state, the Uniform Construction Code. He, it's very different in the way he's allowed to fine compared to a different officer of the city, such as the zoning officer or code enforcement officer.
So would, would you consider asking for frequency as well as quantity increase when you ask the city attorney?
If the board so asks.
Okay, not that I would ask. Because the board asked you to consider raising it for a one-time fine, doubling it maybe. What I'm saying as a member of the public, would you consider saying to the city attorney, someone in the public said, for the big developers, can it not just be a double fine, but maybe a fine every week or every month? That they're out of compliance? Meaning, not your, okay, good, okay, thank you.
Let her finish.
It's up to this board if they want me to do so. But yes, I will consider it.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, okay, and now I'd like to ask the engineer some questions. And uh, and that is um, you, you um, do a lot of work with a lot, all of this with T and M Engineering, correct? I, I, I mean, don't you refer to T and M Engineering a lot? Uh, when, when y'all are talking about, well, we may change this, we may do that based on recommendations from T and M Engineering?
Are you asking? Are you asking?
So I'm, I'm, I'm not, well, since T and M is an engineering firm, I'm asking the engineer, does he confer with T and M as to that letter he drafted?
No.
Okay, you did that yourself?
Yes.
Okay, can I, can I ask why you wouldn't invite the city engineers into your engineering approach to this major change and modifications? Why not?
Because that, that's exactly the process. The, T and M is the city engineer. They work with mayor and council. They drafted this ordinance, which was then sent to the planning board here for review and recommendations. So that's what I did. I gave some recommendations to the board, who then sends it back to mayor and council where T and M reviews it.
Okay, so, so then to, to answer my question, you, you didn't, let's say have a powwow, but T and M had the input with the mayor, council. And then when it came to you, when you drafted your letter, you're, you're kinda taking into account what T and M, the mayor, council and the other boards said, correct? So, so T and M, no, okay.
No.
Okay, so you, you did it in isolation regardless of what T and M does, uh, et cetera, throughout the city. In other words, all the major sewer work and drainage and construction that they're involved in.
Connection with this. He's not talking about everything else that goes on in the city. He didn't testify then.
No, but, but what we're talking here tonight, aren't we talking about the revision uh, of application of state and maybe federal mandated now uh, stringent water quality and quantity runoff? And now we're talking about the city of Asbury looking around and saying, well, we may even have to get more strict because there's a lot of flooding.
Ask a question. Stop testifying. That's the last meeting I'm gonna give you for about testifying. Ask all the questions that you want that are relevant, please be my guest, but stop testifying.
Am I gonna have a chance to comment tonight?
Yes, and it's going to be a relevant comment to what's going on.
I don't, I don't know how you run the meetings, I thought
You know what? Mute him. Mister, Madam Chairwoman, we listened to this gentleman make comments about board members before calling them liars, calling them cheats, calling they don't live in town, all this other stuff, having nothing to do with the matter that was before the board. Though this is not a general session like a mayor and council on a board of ed that has to allow citizens to say anything they want about any topic whatsoever. They have to comment, they have to ask questions relevant to the proceedings, and they have to comment on the matters that are before the board. The comments by Mr. Magnoli before had nothing to do with what the board was considering. He, he attacked you, he attacked Jennifer Sauter, he attacked attorneys, and he attacked everybody, but he not, did not say one thing about what was before the board. That's totally not what this is about. And that's completely out of order and he's subject to be muted for that. So going forward, if we're going to hear Mr. Magnoli make comments about applications, they have to be about the application that's before the board, not about criticizing members, saying people have conflicts of interest. There's no specific instances cited whatsoever about conflicts of interest. Or dishonesty about the mayor or anyone else. The comments have to be relevant. And they were not before, they have to be going forward because I'm going to recommend to you that we mute Mr. Magnoli. And if he doesn't like my, the way I give you advice, I suggest he file an appeal. And we'll let a judge decide it. I'm sorry for going on, but I
I have not enough of this.
That's because Alexis, I, I agree, there's a reason we establish procedure on this board and we need to follow procedure. And outside of that, I also agree that personal accusations should not be tolerated, ever. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the uh, do the uh, does the board have any comments that they would like to uh, to make?
Motion to close the public.
Uh, it was public question.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to close it.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, does the uh, does the, uh, does the planning board, do the planning board members want to make any comments?
Um, I'd like to say that, I'd like to thank Michelle and Jason for the work that they've put into this. This is such an important ordinance for our city. And the fact that we've paid as much attention to it as we have this evening, I think is significant. Um, I, I am just, I just really wanna thank, and I wanna thank Alexis for the questions and Jen for their contribution to this conversation. Um, I just think this was an amazing conversation that had to happen. And I'm so glad that it is happening in the city today. So, that's my comment. and I'm so glad that it is happening in the city today. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Yvonne. I, I also, um, I mean, we've been doing this for a number of weeks. I know that with Michelle and with Eileen and, uh, a number of people from the council to try to get as much as we could into the city ordinance, as we could so that we, that the planning board would then just, uh, add, add more on top of that, and I'm, I'm very happy with how that's worked out. I know that there are modifications that have to be made, that, that Michelle will work on that with Jason. Um, things that we've spoken about. I just wanna find out if there are any other comments, um, that anybody thinks that we have not, uh, taken into account by the board, um, regarding anything. Uh, one thing that I, that I do need to know, Jack, there was one letter we received. Yes, from the Wesley Lake Commission. So, uh, I know that we need to get that into the record.
Yes.
So is that something that you will read?
Sure, I'll read it. Uh, we put, can, uh, Irina, can we pu- post it up?
Yes, I'm gonna put it up. Just give me one second.
It is the only letter that we received from anyone because a lot of people did do input.
Right.
Uh, prior, but this is something that after the, after the ordinance was, uh, sent over to us, the Wesley Lake Commission met and came up with this.
Right, uh, and for the record, this is a legislative-type hearing. Uh, it's actually, uh, it goes even one step further. It's a review-type hearing where we're reviewing ordinances, and we give advice and consent as the official planning agency for the city, uh, to the mayor and council, and they take that and do with it as they please. So typically, we do not accept letters, uh, because they contain hearsay, and in applications for development, you wanna be able to cross-examine the author of the record. But in this case, this is something totally different. So reading the, of a letter into the record, pardon me, is totally, uh, acceptable. So I'll read it. It's Exhibit BB4, uh, today's date, APPB Stormwater. Okay, the letter is dated February 17th, 2021. It's from the Wesley Lake Commission from Asbury Park, New Jersey and Neptune, New Jersey. It's addressed to Barbara Krzak, Chair, Asbury Park Planning Board, City of Asbury Park, One Municipal Plaza, Asbury Park, New Jersey, 07712. Dear Ms. Krzak, I am writing to you on behalf of the Wesley Lake Commission to encourage the Asbury Park Planning Board to take measures to protect Wesley Lake as well as other coastal lakes, uh, and the Atlantic Ocean as you examine the adequacy of the NJDEP Model Ordinance for Stormwater Management. The Wesley Lake Commission recommends that the Asbury Park Stormwater Ordinance increase, increases measures that prevent or reduce the pollution, the pollution of water. We think it is important that the city implement stronger measures to address local water quality as in stormwater runoff that leads directly from development into our lakes. Our major development standards should go above and beyond the NJDEP minimal standards, and a major applicant should have an option if they meet the NJDEP minimum standards but cannot comply with our increased standard of making a predefined contribution to the city to be used exclusively for water quality and flood management infrastructure. The measures that are more specific than the minimum standards of the model ordinance would need to be worded by the professionals. Thank you for your consideration. Gail Rosewater, Chair, Wesley Lake Commission. It's copied to Eileen Chapman of the City Council, Irina Disparian, uh, Disparian, Planning Board Secretary, Jack Serpico, Planning Board Attorney, and the Wesley Lake Commissioners.
Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
All right, we have that in the record. Um, next is that we can open, uh, can I get a motion to open, uh, for public comment, please?
Before we do that, it's more, I got a question.
Sure.
If, if we have, if we have public comment tonight, we're not gonna vote on this because we need some tweaking. You're gonna have to public comment a second time, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, only on the tweaks.
Only on the, only on the modifications.
Yeah, limited to the tweaks.
Okay. Okay, no problem. I just wanted to.
I understand. Okay, um, can we, can I get a motion to open to public comment, please?
Move it more.
Second, Jim Henry.
I have a motion by John Moore and a second by Jim Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. We will open to public comment.
All right, the public comment is, is only to what was discussed today. Um, three minutes.
Okay, I only see one hand up, and it's Mr. Magnoli. Mr. Magnoli, we're going to swear you in first, and then you will be, um, given the clock of three minutes. Mr. Serpico?
Mr. Magnoli, please.
My hand is raised.
Thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You state your name for the record and tell us your address.
Ernest Magnoli, M-I-G-N-O-L-I, 400 Dale Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, 07712.
Go right ahead.
Just one second, Mr. Magnoli.
Just what?
Just one second.
Go ahead and start.
Oh, go ahead and start, okay. So, uh, relative to, uh, what's been said tonight, uh, certainly about questions that I ask, et cetera, uh, I, I think it's fair that since I'm muted and I can't respond, relative to what went on tonight, that it's construed that when I'm saying something, that I'm attacking people personally? I never heard of that at an open public meeting.
Please mute him for a second.
When I, when I, when I'm.
Please mute him for a second, Irina, okay? You certainly did attack members of the board. You, you said they were dishonest. You singled out Jennifer Souter and Barbara Krzak, and then you singled out the mayor, and you brought a councilwoman in who's not even a member of the board. You certainly did. Now you are out of order. You can make comments about the, the statements that were made in connection with this, with this matter. If you're gonna persist and you're gonna do this, you're gonna be muted. So you wanna open it up again? You wanna start again? Be my guest. You can unmute him.
Mr. Magnoli, just one second, and I will start your clock again. Are you there?
How much, yeah, how much time do I have left?
You have three minutes. Please begin.
Okay. So, uh, listening to the process tonight, uh, relative to the changes, modifications, suggestions, et cetera, et cetera, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not at all, uh, um, in a, in agreement. With some things, yes, but with most things, no. In particular, I'm not in agreement with the process, which means we, we listened for an hour or more to 35 issues, and, and then we're asked to comment and, or ask questions. Whereas, I know you refer to other municipalities as an example. When I go to other municipalities for important things like this, the public's invited in usually after every major piece of legislation, which is what you're creating. So if you talk about, will it include, you know, uh, smaller properties, you know, okay. Does the board have any comments? Does the public? And then you go on to the next one. But the, but the way you're doing it, it stacks up so it's so many things that when we finally get a chance to comment or speak, we, we can't, logically can't do it because it's just too much you covered without individual inputs. And, 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 and that's what I consider an important comment. Do I think it's gonna change? No. I, I, municipalities tend to get in a habit pattern. They wanna do it the way they wanna do it, but I just, as a comment, wanna let you know that surrounding municipalities, a lot of them allow more public comment for a longer time. They allow more latitude for mistakes that the public makes. I mean, we're, we're not like city officials, and we don't know when we're being a little too much on the comment side and not enough on the question side. And when we're referring to somebody doing their job, let's say as a, as a mayor, and we say, well, you know, I think the mayor's in conflict, that, we don't, we don't mean personal people. We, we mean in the, in the context. We mean in the context of the job. And, and we are in an open public meeting for that reason, that somebody like me can say, look, I, I can't push the issue, but I think the way that you handled a major piece of legislation tonight, the way you stacked it up like a deck of cards, 52 cards, 52 items, that it's no wonder I'm the only person on the line here. Everybody else fell asleep. Except me. So that's all I have to say.
All right, do we have, um, we have no other members of the public that I see that, uh, have their hand raised? So can I get a motion?
Motion to close. More closed.
Jim Henry.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Mayor Moore and a second by Jim Henry. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Public comment closed.
Okay, um, so, uh, we need to, uh, what, uh, we need to look at a date to be able to bring this back. Um, our next meeting is on the first. I don't know if you will have enough time to be able to finish modifications and get them, uh, posted for Thursday? Is that feasible, or do we need to go to the 15th? Oh, you're muted, Michelle.
It's also muted.
Okay, sorry. I, I have five items to be inserted, corrected, and the only one that appears would, that would take any form of research is the section for minor development with that 95%. The other stuff, a- and the call to Fred, but that's quick. Let me, I wanna go over these items that I have listed to make sure I have them all.
Okay.
We're gonna add the language that in no case should runoff affect adjacent property for all developments. We're gonna make the correction, every time there's a reference to city engineer, it's gonna say, or board engineer where applicable, or change language to reviewing engineer. I'm going to add a, um, the language about mounding um, into the minor development section, avoid, avoiding mounding. And then I'm going to look into raising the penalties. I'm going to look, um, at, confer with the city engineer, Fred Refetto, if we can boost it to 2,000 and 4,000. If the board so desires, I can also ask about other forms of issuing violations. And then the last portion that, that will take a little, a little bit more time is, um, developing a s- different standard than the 95% that comes from a V, a lead standard.
Well, would, would it be fair to say that we could, um, carry it to the first, and if, if it's not done, then we could carry it to the 15th on the first?
Yes, in fact.
So can we, can we try to get it for the first? Because this is so important, and we need to get it to the council as quickly as we can?
And I need to get it to the county, too, so.
Correct.
Yes.
Um, what, what are, what are people's thoughts about, um, the, the penalties? And do we, because I see that we have first offenses, second offenses in here already. Um, what does the board think? Or should we take a look to see what other municipalities, uh, what the standards are there?
If I may?
Yes.
If I can help. It's pretty much, it's, it's standard, uh, Mr. Magnoli's correct, that, you know, a lot of towns, if, if somebody has a continuing violation, municipal court judge has the authority to continually call this a subsequent violation. It's not a matter of you pay your $2,000, or 4,000, or 10,000, whatever it might be, and then you don't have to fix it. You know, you ultimately, you're gonna have to pay the fine and fix it. You can't just pay the fine and get a pass. Uh, so I think you can easily explore that with Fred, uh, because I think these ordinances are gonna ultimately be enforced here in the city, and then the municipal court judge will do the enforcement. So it, it makes sense to see, you want a penalty that has some teeth in it. It isn't so much the money as more, more importantly, is compliance, and you wanna make the money strong enough so that they will comply. Makes sense.
Okay, okay. So can I get a, uh, d- does everybody agree to those, those changes that we spoke about? That, uh, we're okay? So can I get a motion to, uh, carry this application, this, uh, this ordinance to, uh, March 1st? Without notice, or?
There'll be no notice, no.
There'll be no notice.
Michelle, will you be able to post what you're gonna show to the board that night prior to the meeting so members of the public can take a look at things beforehand?
Right, we will aim to do that.
We can do that on a Thursday, Thursday night, for Friday morning.
Right.
Right. That's where we're gonna aim for our typical Thursday evening.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
And if we notice for whatever reason, Michelle, that we have to extend that, we will do that.
Okay.
On the first. Okay.
Move, move to carry to the March 1st meeting.
Second, Jim Henry.
I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jim Henry. And, oh, we don't have to take roll. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I don't hear any opposition, so we will carry this app, uh, discussion to March 1st, 2021, without further notice.
Okay. Um, I'd like to, uh, if you guys don't mind, I know that we're running over, there's one quick item that I'd like to, uh, bring in. I know that we had an executive session that was planned. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that, that that we might move, uh, to our next meeting. Uh, but I'd like to talk about the bylaws. There's a minor, there's a bylaw change that we're looking to make. Um, and we have two options, uh, of the bylaws that we were looking to make. Uh, Yvonne, I don't know if you wanna go through this, or would you like me to?
I'll start, and you can fill me in.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can, I can fill in because this is something that I requested.
I'm sorry, you, you need a motion, a second, and a voice vote to table the executive session.
Can I get a?
Go, table the executive session by Alexis Taylor. Second, Yvonne, please.
Jim Henry, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Alexis Taylor and a second by Yvonne Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
Question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
If, if, I, if, if we gotta move it back, we gotta move it back, but can we put it in the beginning of the agenda so we don't keep on moving it back every meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I have a motion by Alexis Taylor and a second by Yvonne Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
I have one opposed.
Who was it?
Manzella.
Okay, well, I got, I got a note for the record.
Executive session carried to the next meeting of March 1st.
If, if, if the bylaws go quickly and you guys are willing to stay.
I just.
Okay, okay.
Start reading.
Sorry?
Start reading.
Start reading. Go get them, Yvonne.
Okay, did we, did anybody get a copy of this resolution? No, yes, okay. All right. I mean, other than members of the bylaw committee? No?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll read it real quick. Uh, it just says, whereas the planning board, here and referred to as the board of the City of Asbury Park, has a standing committee known as the Design Review Committee, created pursuant to the powers conferred on the board by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and Section 1, colon, 1 dash 6 of the board bylaws and whereas the members of the committee are appointed by the members of the board at the annual reorganization meeting of the board in January of every year. And whereas the board has determined that the goals and objectives of the city master plan that the goals and objectives of the city master plan, planning and zoning development ordinances, and redevelopment plans, and the interests of the public and applicants will be best served if the membership of the committee is composed of all of the members of the board based on the expertise and experience of each of the board members. Whereas, the board seeks to amend the membership of the committee to include all of the members of the board and appoint each member based on, based on a case-by-case basis. And this is offered as a motion. The goal of this is to, one, appoint members to the Design Review Committee on a case-by-case basis, based on their experience, their expertise. For example, if we had a stormwater application, then Alexis would be a great person to be on that, along with Jennifer and maybe someone else that has this particular interest in that. That was one. And the second reason was, it was thought that if we have a standing committee and the committee members have a, a conflicting interest, then they can't vote. So it would be easier if we had, rather than a standing committee, an ad hoc committee. We do have a dissenting opinion on, on the bylaws committee, and that dissenting opinion was that we should have both a standing committee and then an ad hoc committee for special applications. That's it.
And, and the way that, that we're, we've asked that, that, Jack, I'm, I'm asking him that which way is the, the best way for us to take care of this? Because one way is to create this resolution. The other way is to, we are able as a planning board to create additional committees as we need to. The issue that we have right now is that there is an application that we've already stated that the Design Review Committee will meet to discuss any presentations that they have. So we're already in flight, stating that the Design Review Committee will meet. I, in understanding who is on the Design Review Committee for that particular application, when I looked at that, I noticed that the people that had the largest voice, the most, most interest, the most suggestions during our meeting were not all on the Design Review. So I, I'm asking for it to be more flexible for us to be able to swap in one person or another, just like Yvonne said, based on their experience for a particular application. Once that application is over, the Design Review goes back to the, to the people that were appointed in January. Jack, what is your recommendation on these two options?
I think both of them get you to the same place. The using, you're switching out standing members, which is probably not going to happen all that often. But you can switch them out. Or you can go the other way, and you can appoint a committee for those handful of cases that you might deal with during the course of the year. So I think they both get, I always look at things, A, they've got to be legal. B, I always look at things logically, and I try to get from point A to point B with the straightest line, okay? So I, I don't see that there's a whole lot of difference. The end result is both of these are going to get you where you want to be. The only difference is, is that this drafted one can address the application that's going to go before the Design Review Committee within the next month.
So does, I hope that that was clear. I'm not sure if it was, but I'm hoping that it was clear. But if anybody has any questions about it, I'm happy to answer why I'm asking for this. Like I said, if, if, if we want to make a change, we make a change. The board knows that it's coming, that we're asking for a change, and they have to vote on it. If there's no change, then all the design reviews go with the members that were appointed during the reorg in January.
And I, I apologize, I'm on the bylaws committee, but I wasn't able to call into that meeting. But it's my opinion that this, the Design Review Committee meets so infrequently and for so few applications that it, it makes sense just to have it be kind of an ad hoc thing per application. That's just, it just makes sense, rather than, you know, the same group seeing every application. But I'm open to whatever the board wants to.
Moore moves it.
Yeah.
I guess I have a quick question. I, I share in the opinion that I think the opportunity for more people to offer their expertise on an ad hoc basis makes sense. Everyone in this board is qualified to do so in a subcommittee, so I don't see why we need to limit the participation annually in that subcommittee. It just makes sense. I guess my question is, if you were to, maybe, this is a legal question. If you were to appoint an ad hoc committee, does it have to happen in the same meeting in which you are contemplating the application? Like, could we adopt an ad hoc committee on March 1st?
We, that's up to Jack.
Yeah, you, you could, sure.
Okay.
Because, because if this does pass on the first, I am going to request the names of the people that I would like to be at that Design Review Committee for the application where we've already promised to have a meeting, because we have to have it passed before we can actually meet. So those people can be chosen during the meeting as we know that we need a design review, as that's the way the meeting's going. We could do it at that point, or we could do it at a different meeting. But the whole board would know who is representing us.
I appreciate that flexibility, quite honestly. I think that that's fair.
Yeah, okay, so I want to make sure I understand. Apples and apples, apples and peaches, so to speak. Okay, so it would be, which one of the alternatives? This, this, the way this is drafted, to have everyone essentially be eligible to serve on the, on the Design Review Committee? And then on a case-by-case basis, you're going to pick the members of the board to sit on that committee? Or are you going to leave the old committee in place and then have a new one appointed for the specific application? I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as everybody else.
What I'm, what I'm, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I believe the mayor moved the former, and I seconded it.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's the one that was, that was drafted up. And it's, for any, for everyone's edification here, and knowledge, it's still a four, a three, a three-person committee with an alternate, not to have a quorum, and so on, so forth. So it's still structured the same as it was before in terms of membership, amount of members, and so on.
And then, this is just one more procedural question.
Yes.
Because it says, whereas at the first, and we have a reorg meeting every year, I assume, because this is an established committee, that you have to appoint it at the start of every year, and then it's subject to the ad hoc. But it's like doing an interim planner, or an interim, whatever. It's like you, you have to have it established at the first meeting, and then it's subject to our.
Yeah, that's historically what we've done.
Okay.
We vote, you know, just like we appoint chair, vice chair, staffers. So this just tracks with that.
Understood, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's any further discussion, fine. If not, there's a motion, I think, made by the mayor.
The mayor moved it, and Mike seconded it.
Okay. Irina, you want to call a roll, please?
You're muted, Irina.
Thank you. I have a motion by John Moore and a second by Michael Manzella. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Eric Gallovo?
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak?
Yes.
All right, yes is have it, thank you.
Great. All right, so then we'll have the, the executive session regarding the planning board members. I mean, the planners on the first. We'll start with that when the agenda comes out.
And that gets in and out with item H, correct?
Item H.
Yeah, F and H, basically. So moved.
F and H have to be, H also has to be moved.
Right, right.
Has to be tabled, I'm sorry. H, which is the appointment of the 2021 Planning Board Planner and Conflict Planner, that has also, has to be tabled because that has to do with the executive session that we tabled.
Motion to table March 1st.
Second, Jim Henry.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn, unless somebody else has something?
I'm sorry, just one second, I just have to get the next meeting up on the screen.
Yeah, and then you need to vote on that tabling.
Aye.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed?
Okay.
Okay. I know you have to make it official.
Oh, yes.
All right, and can I get a motion to adjourn, or unless we have something else?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm having technical difficulties with the PowerPoint, so that we'll just close the meeting. The next meeting will be on March 1st. It will be available on the City of Asbury Park website.
All right, since you're, you're having the technical difficulties, I'll handle it very simply. Need a motion to adjourn and a second?
Motion.
Don't move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, meeting's adjourned. Good night. Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.